All right. All right. I, Nicholas Pardew, hereby reconvene the Board of Education regular meeting open session at 5:08 PM. I would like to extend a warm welcome to our 2025-26 student board member Madison Bishop. We have a quorum present with all board members in attendance. Please note that this meeting is being both recorded and livestreamed for public viewing. I do want to welcome everybody to a new school year. As a teacher, I just want to let you all know how excited I am and I think the board is for a new school year. I think it's a really exciting time and it's really kind of cool that we have a new format to have the students present today. And so I'm kind of, I'm excited about it. I think we got a lot of good things going. So I would, this time I also need to remind everyone that this governing board meeting, our governing board meetings are a business meeting of the board, held in public and although public participation is encouraged, it is not the public's meeting. It is a duty of the board president or clerk to maintain an orderly, respectful and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices and opinions are welcome. Please refrain from speaking while another person has a floor. Item D1, the board did not take any formal action in closed session. D2, I would like Christine Schmidt to say the pledge of allegiance. Don't mind.
All right. All right. And for approval of the agenda, I would like to amend the title of item G12 to read, "Approval and Adoption of Joint Community Facilities Agreement with the City of Murrieta and Century Communities of California." With that, I call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries 5-0. All right. E is Communications. Special recognition, I call on Mr. Riddell.
They're shy. Hi. Board President Pardew, Dr. Andrews, members of the board. This evening, Keenan is here to provide some recognition to our Risk Management Division. And I'm not going to talk too much about Keenan, other than you know them from all those wonderful trainings you do each and every year. But they do much more than that. They are a third-party administrator with our JPA for the Riverside Schools Risk Management Authority. And I'm going to let Cindy talk to you a little bit more about that.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for that. My name is Cindy Lucio. I am with Keenan. For some of you who may not know, Keenan is the third-party administrator. We help manage the workers' compensation as well as the property and liability programs for the district. And today I'm here to talk about the district's workers' comp coverage. So Murrieta Valley Unified School District is a member of RSRM, the Riverside Schools Risk Management Authority for Work Comp. And in that JPA, there are 20 school districts. And to make it fair and proportionate, each member in that JPA is assessed based on the size and the number of claims. I am here to recognize the district for having a low experience modification rate, which means that the district is having less claims compared to the rest of the peers in the JPA. That is pretty significant. The X mod for the Murrieta Valley Unified School District is 60%, which means essentially the district is paying 40% below the average compared to the other members in the JPA. By having a low X mod, the district is paying less into the program, essentially saving overall cost. It also reflects the strong safety culture within the district. It reflects the proactive risk management approach that we have with the risk management team here at the district. And it also shows the overall commitment from leadership and the dedication from all levels within the school district. On behalf of RSRM, I just want to congratulate and recognize Murrieta Valley Unified School District for having a low experience modification rate. So congratulations.
Adam, just so I can introduce some of the members of the risk management team. Obviously, you've met Director Manjai before for risk management, but also with us are Michelle Gaden and Victoria Lenahan. And they are people that help make all this work happen and do a great job for us. So I just want to recognize them in front of you all.
There we go. Ready? One. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
All right. Your job. Thank you so much. That was really good news. All right. And item E2, student presentations. Dr. Andrews.
Thank you, President Pardew. And just to comment on that, there's been quite a bit of work done by this team for a variety of different things, from additional training, primarily with our special education aides, who oftentimes can end up sometimes getting dinged up a little bit because students are acting and behaving the way they do sometimes. And so we've done a lot of extra work and training for them, safety protocols, things like that. And so our claims have just gone down over the past few years. So it's excellent work, everything from our risk management department all the way down to our special ed instruction, and all the things that we do there just to make a difference for our students and the well-being of everyone here. Tonight, we're going to introduce two groups who are here. This is a change in the, in the format we've had in the past of having a student representative from each school come every week and go through a similar slide deck. We've changed up a little bit. We really want to see some more student engagement and get to meet the students and teachers who make our programs go. So tonight, we have two different schools presenting. We have two schools tonight, and we thought, I'm going to, I'm going to put these two schools on the spot. These are our two oldest high schools. They should be able to pull this off, which they have, and I knew they would. We'll start with Murrieta Valley High School. So Stephen Deep House, Principal Deep House, you're going to present? Come on up. And your team.
All right. It's. All right. Hi Nicholas Pardew hereby reconvene the Board of Education, regular meeting, open session at 5:08 PM. I would like to extend a warm welcome to our 2025-26 student board member Madison Bishop. We have a quorum present with all board members in attendance. Please note that this meeting is being both recorded and livestream for public viewing. I do want to welcome everybody to a new school year. As a teacher, I just want to let you all know how excited I am and I think the board is for a new school year. I think it's a really exciting time and it's really kind of cool that we have a new format to have the students present today. And so I'm kind of, I'm excited about it. I think we got a lot of good things going, so. I would, this time I also need to remind everyone that this is a governing board meeting. Our governing board meetings are a business meeting of the board, held in public and although public participation is encouraged, it is not the public's meeting. It is a duty of the board president or clerk to maintain an orderly, respectful and peaceful meeting where all perspectives, voices and opinions are welcome. Please refrain from speaking while another person has a floor. Item D1, the board did not take any formal action in closed session. D2, I would like Christine Schmidt to say the pledge of allegiance. Don't mind. All right, and for approval of the agenda, I would like to amend the title of item G12 to read, approval and adoption of joint community facilities agreement with the City of Murrieta and Century Communities of California. With that, I call for a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Clarifying question. The nature of the amendment, was it a typographical error or was it substantive?
It was a typographical error. It looks like something was left out by staff. Okay, any opposed? Hearing none? Motion carries five zero. All right, E is Communications. Special recognition, I call on Mr. Riddell.
They're shy. For President Pardew, Dr. Andrews, members of the board, this evening Keenan is here to provide some recognition to our Risk Management Division. And I'm not going to talk too much about Keenan, other than you know them from all those wonderful trainings you do each and every year, but they do much more than that. They are a third-party administrator with our JPA for the Riverside Schools Risk Management Authority. And I'm gonna let Cindy talk to you a little bit more about that.
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you for that. My name is Cindy Lucio. I am with Keenan. For some of you who may not know, Keenan is the third-party administrator. We help manage the workers' compensation as well as the property and liability programs for the district. And today I'm here to talk about the district's workers' comp coverage. So Murrieta Valley Unified School District is a member of RSRM, the Riverside Schools Risk Management Authority for Work Comp. And in that JPA, there are 20 school districts. And to make it fair and proportionate, each member in that JPA is assessed based on the size and the number of claims. I am here to recognize the district for having a low experience modification rate, which means that the district is having less claims compared to the rest of the peers in the JPA. That is pretty significant. The X mod for the Murrieta Valley Unified School District is 60%, which means essentially the district is paying 40% below the average compared to the other members in the JPA. By having a low X mod, the district is paying less into the program, essentially saving overall cost. It also reflects the strong safety culture within the district. It reflects the proactive risk management approach that we have with the risk management team here at the district. And it also shows the overall commitment from leadership and the dedication from all levels within the school district. On behalf of RSRM, I just want to congratulate and recognize Murrieta Valley Unified School District for having a low experience modification rate. But congratulations.
Adam, just so I can introduce some of the members of the risk management team. Obviously, you've met Director Manje before for risk management, but also with us are Michelle Gaden and Victoria Lenahan, and they are people that help make all this work happen and do a great job for us. So I just want to recognize them in front of you all.
There we go.
Ready?
Thank you. Thank you, Cindy.
All right, your job. Thank you so much. That was really good news. All right, and item E2, student presentations. Dr. Andrews.
Thank you, President Pardew. And just to comment on that, there's been quite a bit of work done by this team for a variety of different things, from additional training, primarily with our special education aides, who oftentimes can end up sometimes getting dinged up a little bit because students are acting and behaving the way they do sometimes. And so we've done a lot of extra work and training for them, safety protocols, things like that. And so our claims have just gone down over the past few years. So it's excellent work, everything from our risk management department, all the way down to our special ed instruction, and all the things that we do there, just to make a difference for our students and the well-being of everyone here. Tonight, we're going to introduce two groups who are here. This is a change in the, in the format we've had in the past of having a student representative from each school come every week and go through a similar slide deck. We've changed up a little bit. We really want to see some more student engagement and get to meet the students and teachers who make our programs go. So tonight, we have two different schools presenting, we have two schools tonight, and we thought, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put these two schools on the spot. These are our two oldest high schools. They should be able to pull this off, which they have, and I knew they would. We'll start with Murrieta Valley High School. So Stephen Deep House, Principal Deep House, you're gonna present? Come on up and your team. Good evening, board members, Superintendent Andrews, and honored guests. Tonight, it's with great pride and excitement that we present to you one of our shining stars of Murrieta Valley High School, our Fire Science and EMT program, a true program of distinction at our school. This isn't just a course or a classroom, it's a calling. It's where passion meets purpose and where students suit up, step up, and prepare to save lives. From their first day in the program, our students are immersed in real-world training, which challenges them, inspires them, and transforms them into the next generation of first responders. Behind the strengths of this program are two outstanding leaders, mentors who bring decades of experience, professionalism, and heart to everything they do. Please help me recognize Chief Drew Snyder and Chief Mitch Snyder. These two have not only built a rigorous and respected curriculum, they've also created a culture of integrity, discipline, and service that leaves a lasting impact on every student who walks through their doors. Thanks to their leadership and hard work with our students, this program has become a model of excellence, preparing graduates to enter fire academies, EMT positions, and higher education with confidence and skills. So let me step away and hand the mic over to Chief Snyder and his team. Thank you.
Good evening, board superintendent. We were honored to be here today and behind me, I have a couple student bodies that really put the heart and soul into our Fire Science program. So I'm going to turn it over to our president and vice president of the club, and I also have a previous student that just graduated two months ago, and he is working as a firefighter for Daggett Fire Department, and he has a couple of words to say as well. So I'll turn it over to our president, Avery, and here you go, Avery.
Thank you guys for having me. So my name's Avery Hazelar. I am 16 years old and I attend Murrieta Valley High School. I came in about three years ago as a freshman. I always knew that I wanted to be a fireman, but as I came in, I, you know, saw this awesome program and I joined the Fire Science Club, and ever since then, I have just been so happy with it. I'd like to, you know, thank Chief Snyder's for just being so awesome to me and helping me with everything. This program benefits young kids who are really trying to, you know, look into a career in the fire service or the medical field. This program offers a Fire Science 1, Fire Science 2, and Fire Science 3 Wildland class, as well as a fourth EMT class, so that students can graduate high school with their EMT certification and can go right into the workforce after doing their tests and stuff for the EMT. This program is going to help me a lot in my future career, because right when I graduate, you know, I'm, I'm set up to get hired. So thanks to them, all this is possible. I would now like to introduce my vice president, Landon Potter.
Good afternoon, my name's Landon Potter. I am 17 years old. I am a senior at Murrieta Valley. I just transferred in. I've only been in the program for about a year now, and it has been something that is insane to grasp the hold of. I've been recommended by many, many firemen to join this program and this club, and it's just been a blast. I have about a year of experience in there. It's allowed me to improve on life skills and skills in training, and having these two here as 15-plus years of experience each to guide us and as we go through it, it just makes it so much easier and so much of a blast. Even all the students, the students have a blast in the club and they love the classes and everything that can do with it, and they're always just, they're always having fun. And yeah, thank you very much.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Trent Jones. I'm currently a firefighter for Daggett Fire Department, as well as I'm attending Palomar Community College to continue my associate's degree in Fire Science and Technology, when I started with their program. So I did graduate about two months ago, June 5th, 2025, class of 25. Right after that, kind of didn't do much, just started taking college, started continuing with my college classes, and then a little bit into, I want to say June, halfway through June is when Mr. Snyder here sent me a link to, well, sent me the email and then a link to the application for Daggett Fire. Immediately threw my hat in, went in for the interview, and got the job on the spot. And I owe that to all of these amazing men right here. They picked me up when I was down and they, their program is, is one of a kind. I mean, I don't think I would be here without them, so I give everything to them and their program.
Thank you very much. So in closing, we were recognized in the United States under Lamson. It's the Law and Public Service Education Network as number one in the United States. There's only two programs that have a law enforcement and fire science program, and we came out number one. There's 30-plus programs of fire service, and so we have the clout and we have this cool medallion that hangs not only in Fire Science, but in Mr. Deep House's office as well. So we're pretty proud of that. So this is accomplishment of our program and the student body itself. So we appreciate your support and the community's support.
One major compliment. I just think it is such an amazing thing, the level of professionalism I see in young people and the way you guys present yourselves this season is absolutely phenomenal. And I've seen, I've seen the program on campus and also obviously at the end of the year when you're graduating people, and it's so cool to know that we have an extra set of first responders on campus, when you think about it. We have a much safer campus, right? Because we have these young people who really know what to do. So I'm really proud of you guys. Congratulations.
Oh, I'd like to make a comment too. Sorry. So I just wish they would have this at my son's school when he was in high school. He was at Mesa. Love Mesa, but they didn't have this. But he, he actually became an EMT after high school, and then he is now a fireman for San Diego City. And just so you guys know, I guess San Diego's, I mean, the place to be. That's like his dream job and he loves it. And one of the things they said that I've realized since my son is that you guys are helping people on their worst day. And I know that's what the fire captains are saying. You, you are there on their worst day, so you guys are actually heroes. And so we just appreciate you so much because if you're not hero now, you're going to be, because you're going to be saving people and helping them on their worst day. And just some advice from what I've gone through with my son is learn how to cook, because all the probies have to cook for their fire station, and the captains say, we don't want spaghetti. They want like three-course meals, so good luck. And we're so excited that we have this program here. So good luck, guys. Thanks, thank you so much.
So I apologize for the technical error, didn't realize we had a certain order and the slides were in a certain way. So I apologize for that, but thank you, team, for getting that squared away. And thanks to Murrieta Valley for, for coming and being prepared for that. Next, we have Vista Murrieta High School and the Golden Alliance Program Beaching Clarinet Group. And so we have a student representative to introduce your colleagues, your peers. Tell us who you are and who you brought.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor Run. I'm a current senior at Vista Miranda High School, and I have the privilege of serving as this year's ASB president. I'm proud to present Vista Murrieta's nationally-recognized band and color guard program, not only for their skill, which earned them their position of the top 35 of all programs across the nation, but also their positive culture and citizenship. They're often praised for their outstanding demonstration of class in all they do. So please, let's give a welcome to Vista Miranda High School's band and color guards.
Well, good evening, everyone. First and foremost, I want to say thank you for inviting us here today. It's been such a pleasure. That piece that we performed for you earlier this evening was called Clair de Lune, arranged by, for a clarinet quartet by Claude Debussy. We hope you enjoyed that.
We weren't here, we were in the other room.
Oh, so unfortunate.
We could hear you.
Okay, okay, okay. Oh, thank you so much. Thank you. All right.
I will get you queued up just to.
All right.
Place in the slides.
Thank you.
I don't think you want to do Mr. Dan.
No, I don't think so either.
What? While we're doing that, I appreciate you, Principal Scallion, why don't you wave at the crowd from Vista? And you brought some friends, a couple of our assistant principals, three of you, thank you. Glad to have you here.
Awesome, thank you so much. Well, my name is Daniel Carrato. I'm the current head job major at Vista Miranda High School. And to my right, I have my fellow performers, Lucas Dunggau, Gavin Alzona, and Kayla Coronado. We're here on behalf of the V-Maintress Band Program and Guard. Moving into our slides here, you'll see that we have our mission statement, which is building people through performance. This is our vision throughout everything we do in our program. You'll see that we have our core values listed below. We have passion, integrity, respect, discipline, and excellence. We try and demonstrate these core values in every single thing we do, all day, every day, on and off campus. This is the root of our foundation, and this is what allows us to achieve our vision of win, transcend, win, transcend. We want to win people into our program, train them up, and then send them out into the world. And if we do that theoretically, we will achieve our vision of building people through performance. And it's been such a pleasure to grow alongside everyone in this program. We have people in the Marine Band, the President's Own, the Disneyland Band, they all love what they're experiencing because of what they learned here in this program, and it's seriously such an influential place. And yes, so I will welcome Lucas Dunggau.
Hi, I'm Lucas Dunggau. I'm 17 years old and I'm a senior over at Vista Miranda High School, where I serve as the head clarinet section leader. And allow me to introduce where we've been as a band program and what we've done over the years. Since 2003, the Vista Murrieta High School Golden Alliance has grown from a small local parade band to one of the most nationally-recognized student performance groups in the nation. And we started off in 2003 to 2004 as a small local parade band where we performed halftime performances at the school, as well as small local parades, where we expanded our range from 2005 to 2008, where we made our first Grand Nationals Bands of America performance appearance, where we also received the Suddler Shield International Award, which is an award gifted by the John Philip Sousa Foundation, recognizing bands for their highest, for students with the highest levels of respect and dedicate excellence both on and off the field. And from 2009 to 2016, which was our major breakthrough year, where we made our second Grand Nationals appearance, which is practically the Super Bowl or sort of NFL of the marching band world, where we placed 13th in the nation, we received our El Casanova Espirito Cora Award, which also recognizes students for their excellence and where we've been sort of in the nation. And from 2007 and the, or 2017 and beyond, we've really expanded and put our name in the national scale, where we've also, last year in the, in the last year where we performed in Orlando and placed second behind the fourth-place band in the nation, Tarpon Springs, who received a score of 86. Pretty incredible. And allow me to introduce the video showing sort of a visual demonstration of where we've been as a program.
Hello, my name is Gavin Alzona and I'm a sophomore at Vista Miranda High School. So for the accolades, our concert bands have been nominated for the National Concert Band Festivals for three years in a row. Our world-class indoor percussion plays for finalists ranking fourth in the country. And in the past two years, our marching band has been marked regional champions. And then as Lucas said earlier, last year we went into BOA Orlando, we placed second place, right just behind Tarpon Springs High School. And for our color guard, our varsity winter, winter guard, got gold medalists in the WGASC Championship. And finally, our top jazz band won first place at the RCC Jazz Band Festival last year.
All right, introducing some of our goals that we have for this season and a couple seasons moving forward. For the marching band, we have our acronym WIN. This is our alignment for our program. We try and get everyone moving in the same direction, so we all have one common goal. So WIN stands for, the W stands for Western Domination. Essentially, what we want is that every band on the eastern side of the country, whenever they think of the West, we want them to think of our name first. And then the number one is number one in all of our competitions that we have this season. We want to make sure that we establish that we are the best in the West. And then N stands for a score of 90 in BOA. BOA is essentially, if going back to Lucas's NFL reference, it is the NFL of marching band. And we want to do something that, to get something you've never had, you have to do something you've never done, so we want to achieve a score of 90 in BOA. And if we do that, we hope to achieve our two-year goal, when next year we go back to Grand Nationals, we want to be one of 12 of 24,000. There's around 24,000 high schools in the country, assuming around that number has a marching band, there's 24,000 high school marching bands in the country. Only 12 of them make it into Grand National Finals, and we want one of those 12 spots. So that is our goal for the marching band.
And outside of our marching band, we also have four incredible concert band programs, which we also have one unifying goal, which is to continue upholding a superior level of excellence in all aspects of music, whether that's recreational during our end-of-semester winter concert or our end-of-the-year spring concert, whether that's our graded performances over a festival where we want to receive the highest superior rating across all bands. We want to uphold excellence in everything we do, whether that's musical, visual, or character.
And alongside the marching band and concert band, we have three fantastic jazz bands. So the main focus for the jazz band program is recruitment. By doing this, we're going to be going to middle schools and basically just encouraging students to join jazz. We'll be playing like fun songs, we'll engage with them, be welcoming to them, to establish that jazz is a fun and safe place for them.
Hello, I'm Kayla Coronado, and I'm the Assistant Clarinet Section Leader. I'm also a junior at Vista Miranda High School. For percussion, they've been working hard to rise up in, rise up in the rankings. This is because they have their eyes on winning championships in Dayton, Ohio, which is, if they do, then that'll basically make them the best in the nation. Similar to color guard, our, similar to our percussion, sorry. Our color guard is also working to better their skills so that they could go up in a division. They'll be going up to the Scholastic World Division, and in that division, they'll be able to go against nationally, sorry, they'll be able to compete on a national level.
Yes, and so once again, thank you for having us. That is essentially the summary of where we've been as a program, where we're going, and our core values, which are the foundation of every single thing we do. No matter what, at the end of the day, it's a family and this is a place where everyone can grow through performance. And so we thank you for having us. We thank you, Mr. Wade, for allowing us to be in this program, and thank you so much.
Mr. Wade.
If you guys are a comment, as a former band member myself and a clarinet player. Oh. I played a clarinet and bass clarinet. And. Yeah. Piano too, so I always used to mess with the drums, but I never really was that great at it. But anyways, I have a passion for performance arts. And I just want to recognize, because I see you guys out there, the band practices more than any athletic program in the entire district. You guys practice multiple times a day, early in the morning, late at night. I see you out there practicing. And having been a band person myself, like, you know, I don't think that you guys get the credit for the level of athleticism that it takes. Like I have marched dragging a bass clarinet for miles. I know the physical stamina that it, that takes. And honestly, when I think about. And honestly, when I think about like my life growing up, if there's anything that prepared me for success in a corporate environment, it was the band. Because when you're in the band, at the same time, you are executing choreography that you've memorized, while you're either reading music or from memory playing music, your right hand is doing something totally different from your left hand, your feet are doing something totally different from their body. And at the same time, depending on the instrument that you play, but for a clarinet, you're like exuding an insane amount of oxygen. So the, the athleticism and intellectual resilience that you have in this activity, I think is, is remarkable. And I don't know if someone hasn't, you know, marched with you, that they would recognize that. So I just want to say, it's, it's amazing.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to say, oh my goodness, when you showed the video, my mind was blown. I thought, are these professionals? I was like, this, these are the kids at the school? I am like literally blown away. And also, your slides are amazing, and you're so well spoken. You're, I mean, you don't even have to look at notes like I do. You guys need to take home, take my place up here, because you're much more well spoken. But I love your determination and your competitiveness. And I just, I didn't know this was a thing. Like, I'm, I live here, but I work in a different district, so I don't get to go to a lot of the things here. And I'm just like so proud to have you guys in our school district. I am very like honored to be up here and, you know, with the school district supporting you. And I have every confidence you will achieve the goals that you have made. And so we look forward to you being number one and coming back. So, great job.
Mr. Wade, do you want to add anything? I mean, this guy is responsible.
Just thank you for the opportunity to have these kids recognized, and it's a blessing to get to work with them every day. I have the best job in the world, I get to make music all day and work with incredible students like this. So if we had any of the other two hundred and seventy of them up here, they'd all do the same thing and say the same things. And there is, it's an honor and a pleasure to be able to serve the district and the community and these students in this way. So, thank you.
Well, I think you deserve a raise, because I don't know, it's amazing. Do it, do it your best. Thank you so much.
Nationally recognized is so impressive, and, and great programs come with great leaders, and we're really impressed. I'm, I'm impressed with the dedication you all shown, and you came up and presented so well. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I, I'm just gonna speak about that. I really appreciated the student presentations, I'd like to change up. And it's great to have these programs come in and be recognized on an individual basis. I've, I've really enjoyed this, the change. All right, we're moving on to E3, which is public comments. At this time, the governing board welcomes public comments. Individuals wishing to address the board are requested to complete a request to address the Board of Education. A card located at the entrance of the boardroom is submitted to the executive assistant. In accordance with Board Bylaws 9323, individual speakers shall be allowed up to three minutes to address the board on each agenda or non-agenda item. The board shall limit the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. The board shall take no action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda, except as authorized by law. However, in the exceptional circumstances, when necessary, to ensure full opportunity for public input, the board president may, with board consent, adjust the amount of time allowed for public input. All right, so we're off to public comment. And up first, we have Krista Mossian.
Good evening. During my twenty-one years on this board, I worked with many attorneys. For a while, we were building, excuse me, a school every year, and we had many occasions to work with real estate and construction attorneys. As the district grew and hired more employees, we needed to consult with employment attorneys. Business attorneys were required to help with financial questions. Attorneys knowledgeable in contact law were important, as the district has contracts to purchase books, food, cleaning supplies, and so much more. Unfortunately, we needed litigators, as school districts are a people business and people make mistakes. There is one thing all these attorneys had in common, they were also education attorneys. If you have looked at the California Education Code, you know it is not a simple document. Education laws touch on everything a district does. For example, a real estate attorney who does not have a background in education law will be useless to a school district. As I looked at item G2 and read through the, excuse me, the list of attorneys on the rate schedule that is part of the contract and examine their bios, I see that none of them are education attorneys. None of them have any experience with school districts. Nick, since you put this item on the agenda, could you please let us know what exactly you expect these attorneys to help the district with? Or will other attorneys work with the district? If the attorneys are not listed in the contract, wouldn't this be a breach of contract? I know you all want to be transparent with the community you represent. So it's essential that the details of the planned activities of this attorney firm be shared completely with the voters. Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Schwartz, followed by Emily Brooks.
Dr. Andres, board members. I'm here to talk about our experience at Temecula Valley Unified School District with Advocates for Faith and Freedom, one of Robert Tyler's law firms, which represented the Temecula Valley Unified School District. The website of the firm, Tyler Law LLP, makes no mention of education law, and I believe it would be a mistake to hire them as general counsel. The website says Tyler Law LLP has been serving religious organizations, businesses, and individuals in California and throughout the country since nineteen ninety-five. Team of attorneys at Tyler Law has acquired a wide range of experience from extensive work in business, real estate, and land use. The previous Temecula Valley Unified School Board majority took office in December 2022. During the first meeting, that board passed a controversial ban on the teaching of critical race theory. Not long after a lawsuit ensued regarding the ban, and that board hired Mr. Tyler to defend the ban. The case proceeded through the courts in February twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The following happened before the California Court of Appeals, Fourth Appellate District, Division Three. One of Mr. Tyler's associates was defending the CRT ban, was being questioned by the court. This is what she said.
If the resolution is not banned, this session is on slavery. The service figures, i.e. Jim Crow, or the gender rights group is concerned in such topics. So what would they teach about Jim Crow? Lawyer, it'd be permissible. Anything would be permissible unless they violate these ethical guidelines and doctrines of the resolution. So it doesn't prohibit a teacher in teaching about who Jim Crow was, what the Jim Crow laws were, what affected Jim Crow's law was Jim Crow. She was a civil rights individual, and to be honest, I'm not prepared to go through the history of Jim Crow and.
I think that's enough. I think that attorney's knowledge of education law speaks for itself. Thank you for letting me speak to you.
Good evening. I'm also here to speak against the contract you've proposed to hire Bob Tyler's law firm. The rationale is that some legal complaints fall beyond the scope of typical education legal services, according to the agenda you gave us tonight. I'm wondering, does this contract apply only to specific complaints then that have been filed? Or would it apply to any future litigation as well? Are we trying to hire Bob Tyler to be general counsel for the district? Do our current district attorneys not already have the ability and actually the ethical obligation to consult with outside counsel if a matter is actually outside their scope? What I suspect, and as others have mentioned, is that the reason you want to hire Bob Tyler's law firm is to pursue your highly partisan parents' rights agenda that has been repeatedly rejected by the courts and by the State Department of Education. And so your current attorneys most likely are advising against it. Bob Tyler, however, owns and also runs Advocates for Faith and Freedom, contributed to your campaign, Mr. Pardue, via the IE Family PAC. And so he clearly also has a political agenda he wants to pursue. Now he wants to do it using our district's dollars. This creates a clear conflict of interest. And you should, at minimum, Mr. Pardue, recuse yourself from the vote tonight, as should anyone else who received money from the IE Family PAC, to which Mr. Bob Tyler contributed. I also speak really briefly because my son wants me to take him to volleyball practice. I have a second comment card, you can cancel that one. Ms. Schmidt, you spoke at the last meeting in June against climate change in rejecting the IB science textbooks that apparently are late to arrive, possibly as a result. I took my kids to Alaska this summer, saw areas where glaciers have receded so significantly. We saw a moose that was like emaciated and starved because it had, you know, lack of access to food. All of us unfortunately witnessed those awful floods in Texas, a hundred-year floods that are happening every ten years now. We've watched parts of our state burn. We see massive environmental disasters happening all around the world on a regular basis. Regardless of your political beliefs and how those are religious beliefs and how those might influence your views on climate change, you are doing our students a massive disservice by denying them the opportunity to learn important science that will affect their future. The insurance companies believe in science and climate change. They certainly do, that's why they're getting out of the state. The people around the world believe in it. It's solidly accepted by ninety-nine percent of scientists around the world. And so if you can't at least allow our students to learn it, regardless of you, if you can't step away from your political and your religious beliefs and allow our students to learn properly, you need to recuse yourself as well from the board. At a minimum, at least, please stop quoting social media posts as your authority when you sit on that board. We require more from our fourth graders in science classes, they learn credible sources, please use them as well. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Jeremy Murphy.
Hi, I'll also be speaking about G2. I appreciate the time, I'm a dad of three daughters in the district. And you know, when, when Temecula was considering spending more tax dollars on more lawyers, there was a speaker during public comment who made a comparison I thought was pretty good. He compared lawyers to those rumble strips that you see on the highway, right? Because they're necessary, but you don't really notice them unless you're kind of veering off the road, right? And you definitely don't need seven layers of them on both sides of the highway, right? So it's pretty simple, unless you're planning to drive us into a ditch and mortgage the district's future. Maybe we can look at ways that invest in our tax dollars into like improving academic outcomes instead of enriching our lawyer friends. Excuse me, because I, I really don't know how this doesn't look shady. Like, when you look at the website, like the other speakers have said, there's not a lot of experience in special circumstances surrounding supporting public schools and education law. There's also been a couple who have connected to Nick's campaign, and the IE Family PAC. So I would hope Nick would recuse himself as well because of the apparent conflict of interest, because a true public servant would do what they need to do to avoid any appearance of impropriety, regardless if there's a conflict or not, right? I'm not a hundred percent optimistic though, because back in May of twenty twenty-four, when Nick wanted to hire Bob Tyler's other firm, I asked Nick to recuse himself as well, and he didn't. His email response was pretty telling, because he didn't deny the conflict. Instead, he said, quote, "The MEA, for example, is the primary donor for other board members, and we just voted on increasing the pay for MEA," unquote. So he compared paying his lawyer donors to the collaborative bargaining process and paying teachers. Not a great comparison, and if you draw it out even further, I don't know how using tax dollars on lawyers like increases the percentage of CTE completers and pathways or improves reading scores or reduces class sizes. Like, you guys were just talking about budget issues most of last spring. Eleanor voted to fire social workers because of budgetary restrictions. And now we're going to use tax dollars on even more lawyers. It doesn't really make sense. Good policy and sound governance should not require additional legal help. Like, when you do the actual work and you keep it between the ditches, you shouldn't need seven extra lanes of rumble strips on either side, right? But you guys are the ones driving, and you're, you're choosing lawyers over social workers, which is kind of concerning. But I'm just asking that you focus your energy and tax dollars, hard tax dollars, to proven ways to increase and improve academic outcomes, instead of just setting them on fire in legal fees? Thanks.
Next up, we have Marina DeBrower. DeBrower?
Brower.
DeBrower, sorry about that.
That's okay, no one could get that name. Good evening, members of the board, my name is Marina DeBrower, and I am a Marietta resident and small business owner and mother to five children with three in the district. Go Broncos! I want to take a moment to express some serious concerns regarding the proposed contract to hire a new law firm, Tyler Law. First, I am puzzled as to why the district would consider hiring a law firm that, according to the rate schedule and the firm's website, does not have attorneys specializing in education law. Their website lists lots of other specializations in real estate, corporate business, churches, nonprofits, estate planning, asset protection, labor and employment, civil litigation. Nowhere on the website does it mention that they specialize in education law. Education law is a very specific and complex field, and having legal counsel with that expertise is essential to effectively supporting our schools, staff, and students. Could the board please clarify why a firm without education law specialists are being considered? Second, I am concerned about potential conflicts of interest. It has come to my attention that some attorneys at this firm have donated money to Tin Thompson's IE Family PAC, an organization that helped finance Nick Pardue's election campaign. This raises a serious question about impartiality and transparency. Would it not be appropriate for any board member with such a connection to recuse themselves from voting on this contract to maintain public trust and uphold ethical standards? Lastly, the rate schedule attached to the contract lists specific attorneys, yet it is unclear whether other attorneys not listed will be allowed to work on district matters. If that is the case, it could be a bait-and-switch situation. The board and community deserve clear, transparent information about who will be representing the district legally, excuse me. I urge the board to carefully reconsider these issues and ensure that the district is represented by qualified education law experts without conflicts of interest. Our schools and community deserve nothing less. Thank you.
All right. Item E5? Or did I miss something, I missed something, did I? Item E4, Employee Organization Reports, Lisa Murray, President of MEA.
Good evening. Welcome back. It was way too quick of a summer break and has already been a busy start to the new school year. As I begin my twenty-ninth year in education, my twenty-first year in MVOSD, and my second as MEA president, I'm looking forward to continuing to advocate for the very best teaching and learning conditions for the educators and students of MVOSD. I'm going to try to keep my report short for the sake of time, but I do have a few updates that I want to share with you guys tonight. To start, MEA hosted our first summertime member engagement event at the Lake Elsinore Storm baseball game in July. We had a great night socially, socializing with our colleagues and watching the storm play the Rancho Cucamonga quake. We will definitely be planning another event like this one and hope we can get even more members to join us next time. In July, we also sent one of our executive board members to the Annual CTA Summer Institute, where she spent the week participating in the Emerging Leaders Strand, where she gained the information, resources, and skills needed to become an even more effective organizer and leader of our association. As well, Julie Palladi and I attended the Annual CTA Presidents Conference in Burlingame. We came back with lots of. We came back with lots of fresh new ideas on how to run more efficient meetings, how to better engage our members, and how to recruit and develop new leaders within our membership. Last week, we partnered with the district to host the New Hire Immersion Day, where we provided lunch for 19 new MVUSD teachers and enrolled 18 of them as MEA members. We continue to be MEA-strong with a solid membership of more than 95% of our bargaining unit and continuing to grow. In addition, last week I was able to stop into the SLP and psychologist training, as well as the new elementary math curriculum training, and I had the opportunity to visit Thompson Middle School and chat with their new principal, and to speak with teachers after both Chevila's and Marietta Valley's staff meetings. Finally, and most importantly, we recently asked our members this question: What is one thing that is keeping you from doing your very best work with students? The survey is still open, but of the responses we have received so far, there are three very clear categories of answers. First, poor student behavior and lack of support with behavior by parents and administrators. Second, not enough time to prep, plan, grade, complete paperwork, update Canvas, communicate with families, and implement constantly changing district initiatives. And finally, class sizes and caseloads that are simply way too large, which in itself compounds the first two issues. As such, these three things will serve as the main focus of our association this year. So while you are all up there contemplating spending possibly hundreds of thousands of dollars with another law firm, or whether or not the superintendent should get a guaranteed minimum 2.5% salary increase, not that it isn't deserved, even though teachers were offered only a measly half a percent, we are all sitting out here wondering when you are going to start talking about and investing in the things that actually make a difference for our educators and students. That said, get excited to hear lots more about these three hot topics from me at upcoming board meetings. Thank you, and I wish all of our MEA members the very best year yet.
All right, thank you for that. And Brette Musquez, President of CSCE.
All right. President Pardue, Dr. Andrews, first, I'd like to welcome back our amazing classified staff. As we step into the new school year, I trust that their summer was filled with moments of rejuvenation and self-care. I'd like them to remember that the wellness of our union and our students starts with each and every one of them. As we gear up for the 25, 26 school year, I'd like to take a moment to express my gratitude, or my team's gratitude, to all our classified staff who worked tirelessly to prepare our buses, buildings, classrooms, getting our kitchens ready for fresh food, and our grounds. Their efforts make a significant difference, and we are truly thankful. Rest assured, your leadership team is committed to advocating for your rights and ensuring that your voices are heard. But let's not forget, the strength of our union relies on each and every one of you. If there are any concerns, issues, please do not hesitate to reach out. We want every single one of you to feel welcome, safe, supported, successful, and most importantly, valued. We have an important journey ahead, not just for the students we serve, but also for our dedicated classified members who pour their hearts into helping those students thrive. Welcome back, and let's make this school year a remarkable one. During the summer, we were able to get some things done late at the end of school year, and so we held some votes for some new job descriptions that are on the agenda today. We were able to create a new job description. We updated some of our job descriptions for family service now, early learning aides. We were able to add more hours to our nutrition service twos, who act as the leads at the elementary level. We were able to attend CSA's annual conference, there were six of us, two of them were new members. The theme for the conference was United for Tomorrow, Rooted in Strength. So the two new members were able to see, I call it a supercharged CSA chapter meeting, but they're able to vote on the leadership team there, vote on issues that affect all members. So there was 1,500 classified employees there that attended, so up and down the state of California. Upcoming, we have our Maintenance and Operations Academy. It's two days, it's in Santa Ana, where they will be offered certificates in forklift and scissor lift trainings, certificate for forklift and scissor lift. They will provide career-building workshops and more. The day meeting I was not able to attend, I took my end-of-year vacation with my family. Dr. Andrews, I appreciate you coming and speaking encouraging words to our members. The purpose is to help build those relationships with our members. I forgot to send out invites to the rest of the board. I will send them in January, but again, the purpose of this, I know there was a little bit of things that happened last year, but the purpose is to help build those relationships with our classified and hope that you provide those, or provide encouraging words to them to get this school year started. So we do have a day meeting in January, so look for invites closer to then. Other than that, I look forward to finishing negotiations for the 24, 25 school year. And I thank you for letting me speak.
All right, and item E5, Superintendent Report, Dr. Andrews.
President Pardue, thank you. Would it be acceptable to the board if we had Mrs. Bishop go first? Now she has a game to get to. Would that be allowable?
Bishop, we want to get you to the game.
If you want to share. And we haven't had much of experience yet because this is day two of her job and day one for us, so anyways, anything you want to share, yes.
Well, we started our year off strong yesterday, but not much to share right now, so I have nothing at this time.
Thank you, Allison. Oh, and I know that she has to leave, she has a game, starts at seven, and she does have an injury, but she's on the girls' flag football team, so she's got to support the team. So I'll make a report. I've been able to visit the center of the district, all eight schools in the center of the district, and I've visited all of the schools on the west side of the district today. Tomorrow, I'll get all the east side schools, be able to visit many of them. So far, staff reported relatively smooth opening this year. We did start on Monday, which we haven't started on Monday for the past 16 school years. We know this is a change for our community, and so we're kind of not quite in the groove, but we're in the groove. And so all the schools I've been to have been running pretty smoothly and schedule changes and all those things are happening, and I've seen little ones on the playground and big ones. I was in the school photo with Marietta Mesa, so great to see up out there with our students and our teachers and just reconnect with them. As was mentioned by Ms. Murray, yes, we are seeing some larger classes, and we carefully manage the number of teachers and aides based on enrollment. Financially, we're not able to allocate additional staff until enrollment requires it. In past years, we've had a fiscal position to be really pretty generous in the onset of school because of our fiscal position with declining enrollment or relatively declining enrollment. We just have to be incredibly cautious before committing fiscal resources in terms of additional staff. So we're trying to be as prudent as we can, but it will be difficult as we're living with it. That being said, we've seen increases, we've seen little increases in different places like our TK and Kinder. I'm sure people in the community have seen our campaign with the signs, with the ads, with the orange signs on our white trucks and all the things we did, including our TK Day. Also, our high schoolers tend to be growing, so our schools are seeing very large freshman classes. Those are positive to see that in the coming years, but we still remain cautious. This year, we have a theme this year, the theme is momentum with purpose. Each year I've been superintendent, I've been able to share a certain theme to kind of unify us or at least give us a frame of reference as we proceed. So I shared with our employees last week, the work's been done, this has been accomplished coming out of the pandemic. So by way of reminder, or those who don't know, in 2020, the 21, 22 school year was the last school year where there were any pandemic restrictions. And we had to wear masks up through spring break approximately. I joined the district following that time period. I came in July of 2022, in essence, the first year without any pandemic restrictions. In essence, it was a restart for school districts across the state of California and our schools here in Marietta. Since that time, these are the things that have been accomplished with the team. We've adopted a profile of a graduate and updated all of our grade-level projects for high schools. We've changed our message from a college-for-all kind of messaging to a post-secondary credential for all, and that may come by any way: an apprenticeship, college two- or four-year, a military career, vocational school, or even working for the district. That's been a change in message. We've improved our career awareness, exploration, and preparation activities. We've instituted professional learning teams across every grade and every subject at every school. We've also began to implement a multi-tiered system of support, which is all the behavior supports that go along with that at all of our schools in a much more uniform manner. We've updated our attendance boundaries, we went through redistricting, recall, board members, welcome to like meeting three, and you voted, we got through that, to accommodate new growth in our city, and we made tremendous advances in the safety of our campuses, and much of that is playing out this year. We have purchased, renovated, and opened a new preschool facility now called the Early Learning Center located on Madison Avenue. We have created through this collective effort a tremendous impetus of systems and effort to improve our school system to be more effective, more efficient, and have better outcomes for kids. The result has been an increase in student performance, not some sort of incredibly like 10% gain, but a regular 2% to 3% gain each year since the pandemic. We've increased our attendance rate, not quite to pre-pandemic numbers, but on the increase, but still we're in the right direction. We've increased our TK and Kinder enrollment there at both of those and fully implemented the TK system. We've also seen a decrease in the chronic absenteeism rate. So in that case, decrease is good. So we've created a momentum, and we want to continue that momentum moving forward within the district. So we're off to an exciting school year, we're excited for the things that we anticipate happening this school year as we just continue to stay focused on those things around instruction and supporting students as we take care of our facilities and address enrollment and our budget. So this concludes my comment, thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to Board Member Reports, and I'd like to kick that off. It's a new school year, and our focus actually is on academics. I thought it was wonderful to hear, especially Mrs. Lisa Murray, because your hot-button topics have to be mine as well. Poor student behavior is a big deal and has been from the very beginning. One of the things as a teacher in the classroom that I have seen is a growing disrespect for teachers, and as a result, when teachers aren't safe, students don't feel safe. And if we have poor behaviors, we don't usually have great learning outcomes. And so as a board, I know it's been a conversation that I've had with Dr. Andrews more than a few times, that we'd like to see us be a lot tougher on student behaviors. And I feel like as a board, we've been working really hard at that to make sure that our classrooms are safe for students to learn and for teachers to teach. It's really important to me, it's a high priority. Keen on training, I can tell you again as a teacher, is not the funnest thing in the whole world. There's a lot of time and energy there. I know how much work it goes into getting my classroom prepared, I see my wife working hard to get the classroom prepared. It is a lot of work to get this school year started for teachers. So I'm really impressed with the efforts. I know we're in challenging times for a variety of reasons. To me, it's an exciting time, I love seeing the new kids coming in, I love getting to introduce myself to them, to see that excitement of starting the school year. It's a fun time, just generally. I think you mentioned time and then large class sizes. Am I missing something? Was it time? Were you talking about keen on time and then large class sizes? One of the things that comes up, and I thought was very interesting as people were discussing the legal thing, we will discuss that when that agenda item comes up, but my focus was to meet with our Ed Services, with Faith Munchnick and Jen Schreiber and Dr. Andrews, to discuss math scores and PE. Math scores are a big deal because I see math as a gateway for kids to be successful in high school and then to move on to college. It's hard to get into business, so many kids out here at senior levels say, I want to get a business degree. Well, you got to get through business calc, and a lot of people don't realize how important what a gateway math really is. And one of the things that I've also discovered, because I did start as a junior high teacher with 40 kids in my classroom, 46 graders, that's a big class, and behaviors were tough, and learning how to, classroom management was a big, big thing. And with bad behavior, if you don't pick up your math, you're not going to get into high school and be prepared. And so one of the conversation points was, how is behavior tied with those math scores? How is behavior tied with what our kids are learning in the classroom, and are they going to go to high school prepared? And that was a big, big issue for me. It's something I'd like to see in our data internally so that we can make sure that our students are prepared to get to high school, they're going to be successful, and that our teachers are teaching in a safe environment. That's, it's a big deal. The other thing I think that most people maybe have not paid attention, I've talked about this before, our LCAP funding is well below the rest of the states. It's a huge problem, and I think we all suffer from it. We talked about this, when the bond was coming up, that impacts all kinds of things from the class size issue to pay to our facilities. And then our taxpayers, you know, Marietta, have to pay higher taxes to be able to maintain our facilities. Our teachers have to have lower pay. My wife and I work in different districts, our paychecks are very different. I think it's important for our community to know that. The state of California, they determined that we're going to get less money. Additionally, the state of California has a supermajority that actually listens to one of the largest groups that influences politicians in the nation. It's the CTA. And if we're not getting funded by the state, we have a local called MEA, and your members have a big voice up in Sacramento. They wouldn't listen to me, they'd listen to you. Let's prioritize education again. The priorities you see that come out of Sacramento are not education. You will hear everything under the sun, but it is not education and definitely doesn't have anything to do with reading, writing, and arithmetic. We end up with all kinds of crazy stuff come down here, and we've been dealing with for the last two years. So if we could maintain a state government that would focus on their priorities that we care about, and we could communicate that up the chain, I think we'd see a lot more resources in education, and we wouldn't have near the problems that we have. So I would appreciate if we think about that as a community, because we're all educated. We understand that the money comes from the state. Furthermore, our enrollments are really important. If our enrollments decline because us, this group of community, the adults, continue to bicker over partisan issues, there's going to be a lot of people who don't want to send their kids here, and we've talked about that. I'm not saying that's why all the enrollments are going down, I'm saying it could be a contributing factor. So if we could get along and we could figure out ways to deal with the issues that are being forced upon us by the state of California, we're going to be in a better shape, and we're communicating to all the constituents that are watching us and hearing us that, hey, we are trying really hard to navigate this, and we want to do what's right by your students, all of our students. And I'm not sure that that's being conveyed very well by the adults that pay attention to the school board. We're doing our very best. With that, that ends my report. I'm going to call Mrs. Munoz next.
Welcome to the new school year. It went by so fast this summer. When I came in, I said, I feel like I blinked, and it's already the middle of August, and I think I'll blink again, and then it'll be December, like, the time is just ticking away. I'm excited for the new school year, I'm excited for the potential of this board and what we could accomplish together if we really did embody some of the comments that Mr. Pardue just reiterated. I won't hold my breath, though. On Monday, I had the pleasure of attending the Rotary as one of the school board representatives. And one of the things that was really, left an impression on me was their four-way test. So for those of you that aren't familiar with it, I'm going to read it to you. The four-way test. This test, which has been translated into more than 100 languages, asks the following questions. Is it the truth? Is it fair to all concerned? Will it bring goodwill and better friendships? Will it benefit, will it be beneficial to all concerned? And so I read about that the evening before I was going to attend Rotary, because, you know, I like to do my homework and know what I'm walking into, and so that impressed me. And then- And then in the actual meeting, everyone stands up, they do the pledge of allegiance and then together in unison, they also out loud reiterate the four-way test. And so I said to myself, wow, imagine if we governed that way. And it made me reflect on my time on this board. And I asked myself, if we had applied even a semblance of the four-way test to some of the decisions that we've made in our short amount of time here, would the outcome have been the same? And I don't think that it would have been. When I reflected on my short time on this board, for the most part, it's been a lot of consent agenda items and just standard run-of-the-bill business of the district that we don't really influence. But when I thought about the new ideation, the actual policy that we as a board put in place, if I applied that four-way test, they wouldn't have passed. Because what did we do in my short time here? We passed a public outing policy, an anti-trans policy. We did things that didn't benefit all. We did things without full facts and information. We made a lot of decisions with a lot of unanswered questions. So I really am hopeful for what could be if we actually came here as a board with the best entrance of the students and the mission of this district at heart and maybe applied some of the principles of the four-way test, because I think that they would benefit our district greatly. If as a board, we really were focused on nonpartisan issues, we really were focused on investing our time and dollars in things that help student learning and achievement. Because thus far, and I own it, I'm a member of this board, even though sometimes I don't vote with it, I still own the decisions that it makes. And I can sit here honestly before you today and say, we have not been serving you and we have not been serving the students. I'm super excited about agenda item G5, where I am proposing that we make an amendment to board policy to actually create transparency that has not existed, at least in my short time here. As an example, I don't know why we need the Tyler Law Firm, but I'm being asked to vote on it today. As a board member, I should know, what is it that the other four law firms we have on retainer aren't doing that we need this one? I don't know. If I don't know, you guys definitely don't know. We need transparency and I think this is the first original ideation that actually intends to serve and benefit all members of the community, not just a subsection. So I'm super excited about this year. I am ever more committed to serving the mission and to focus on student learning and achievement. I hope we get there.
All right. Next we have Mrs. Schmidt.
Okay, well, welcome back to school, everyone. I hope everyone had an amazing summer break and a fantastic first day of school. I wanted to give a special welcome to our TK students as they're beginning their school journey. It's bittersweet sending your little ones off to school for the first time. And I think I remember my son, he got us up at like 4:30 in the morning, stand, standing over our bed and said, I'm ready for school. We're like, what? Go back to bed. But then when we took him, like the next day, he's like, I don't want to go anymore. So that's kind of what's going to happen to these parents. But I know for parents, it's exciting to send them off, but it's also bittersweet. But, and I also wanted to say to our high school seniors, may this be a memorable senior year. Slow down and take it all in. There's so many activities and, and just enjoy it. And again, parents, we know that this is a bittersweet time for you, so I definitely feel for you. This summer and at the end of the last school year, I have been working with our district and community members on the Constitution Day opportunities and events that are coming up in September. So as you may or may not know, Constitution Day is September 17th and community members in Marietta have set up, are going to set up booths during Marietta Market Night on Thursday, September 18th, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM in Old Town Marietta. There will be tables with hands-on constitution activities and crafts for students in grades TK through eight to complete, as well as some prizes given out. And that's just to bring some awareness to students in our communities about Constitution Day. So I'm so happy that we can partner with the Marietta Market Night to bring attention to this important day, since it is our heritage. I had asked for a list of resources for Constitution Day that could be given to teachers on that day, so they didn't have to come up with something on their own, because I know as a teacher, it's like you want us to do one more thing. That's what we say. But actually, I was, I was working with the district to get like a playlist kind of type thing, so teachers could just click on the link and find activities that they could do with their students on that day. But I guess they didn't have time to get to that request. So I'm just asking teachers, all teachers, please just recognize that day in your classroom with your students by doing some sort of activity, like reading a book. Here's an example, one like for the lower grades, what is a constitution? Maybe just read this to them, you know, after recess or something throughout the week. Or students could write an essay, or they could just watch a video about the constitution or about the signers of the constitution. They could have a discussion, they could dress up as one of the signers or color a picture of one of the signers, just something that is related to Constitution Day to bring awareness. Thank you for your attention to this matter. I've also been working with the district on a constitution test that students in eighth grade can take at the end of their social studies unit in which they study the constitution. So it's already in their curriculum for eighth grade. And at the end of that unit, it will be used as a, as a, as a test, because I found out that it used to be a past practice in our state and states across the United States to give all eighth graders a constitution exam. But somehow, over the years, that went away and so we're bringing it back. Eighth grade teachers, don't worry, you don't have to do anything extra. It is already prepared and ready to go. We are working on making it digital, so we'll grade it for you. All you have to do is simply give it to the students. And all students that score 90% or above will be recognized and rewarded. It is important that we know our constitution and our rights. I think the experience during COVID especially made us all super aware of this. The constitution is what makes the United States the best country in the world. I have also partnered with the community to get pocket constitutions donated to every eighth grader, so I'm super excited about that. Thank you to the people who have paid for and are donating these pocket constitutions to our eighth graders. In addition to the constitution test, students will have the opportunity, the eighth grade students will have the opportunity to participate in a civics be that is later on in the year, where they can compete at the local and national level to receive money. So, so think of a spelling bee or a science fair, how you go to the district level and then the county level, the state level and all of that. They are going to be able to compete. This will be the first time that our students will have had this opportunity, so we are grateful to the Chamber of Commerce and their partnership. So students, if this is something that is up your alley, start studying now. You will receive details as these events come up. I hope you all have a fantastic school year. This concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Ms. Young.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. I hope everybody got some rest this summer and also had some fun adventures. It always goes too fast as a few people have brought up already. So I've been volunteering throughout most of the summer for the Nature Education Foundation for Santa Rosa Plateau. They have a series of fundraiser concerts. What is the money for? It's to pay for these third grade field trips. They, we actually pay for all of the surrounding districts for the buses to get them to the plateau for their field trips. I can give you a little history, how this started up. This used to be paid for by the local water district. And at one point, they decided not to do it anymore. So this foundation was created, so these kids still have the same opportunities. They also have programs for middle and high school students, but the biggest one is, and the most expensive to fund is a third grade program. So I went to the administrative kickoff and I've gone every year since I've been on the board. And it was a very positive and inspirational morning and I am a big fan of these type of events where everybody's together. People can network from the different schools and from here and, you know, focus on general common goals and, because we all want our kids to have the best educational experience. So, and I also just would like to talk about how I feel, you know, my role as a board member. So, you know, we're a public school district. And this, again, I will, we all know this, this is the number one ranked district in Riverside County. We have a very diverse population here. There's actually no racial majority. Latinos are the largest ethnic group. Okay, there's a lot of diversity here, you know, with religious beliefs and our people with no religious beliefs. Again, we're a public school district. We have kids who identify as LGBTQ. They are a very small and vulnerable minority and a lot of them are really scared right now. They feel like they're under attack. I know most of us personally can't relate very well to people who think or feel differently than we do, and I don't think I'm any exception to this. But I don't really think that should matter. Everybody has the right to feel safe and everybody has the right to be treated with dignity. It's personally very painful for me to see vulnerable groups of kids being attacked. These kids have parents and overwhelmingly, the parents support them. There are exceptions to this and we're very painfully aware of that. Some of them actually spoke at one of our board meetings. So there are kids who will get abused when they come out to their parents. I think board trustees, right now, most training is voluntary and I really think we should be legally required to get training. The only training that's legally required right now is ethics training and that's relatively new, so that we know our roles and responsibilities and the limitations of our roles. This is a nonpartisan position and I, everybody has a right to their personal opinions, both political and religious, but we are in a nonpartisan position and we should not be posing our personal, political or religious beliefs on other people. I don't even think we should be talking about this stuff on the dais. This is a public school district, we're not a private school district. And we have to remember that we're here to serve everybody. So nobody should, no employees or students should feel like they're going to school or working in a hostile environment. And that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. And Mrs. Briggs.
Okay. Oh, I had my little deal. I apologize. Julie, is that the public comment that's on here? Is that the one that was submitted online that I see here now? Okay, there's no name of who it is, it's just a comment? So I apologize, Nick, I had some, somebody submitted an online public comment that I had meant to read during the public comment section, so I'll use part of my board time to be able to read. It's not much. It just says, good evening, board members, Dr. Anders, President Purdue, regarding agenda item two, seems wise to have access. It seems wise to have access to a law firm that can handle special legal matters concerning constitutional law, civil rights issues and religious freedoms and protections. Before selecting Tyler Law LLP or any firm to handle such matters, a discussion about why this is best qualified to represent the district should be held first. Thank you for your time. There you go. I just read it for you, so it's fair. So if we can get some comment on that, I'd appreciate it too. I wanted to let you guys know this past month has been, it's been good, busy. We didn't meet for the month of July, but we did meet for, as a team, there was a, Darren Daniels hosted the facilities master plan meeting, which I was able to sit in. We were here from 7:30 to 4:30, I think, that day. And it was quite enlightening. It was a great meeting. I saw the, you get to see the inner workings of the district from the other end of this, the table and it was a, I thought, I thought it was a great meeting. But just where our facilities are, I think it's in good hands with Darren and Jose and his team with what they're doing and it's, it's just exciting stuff happening, but that was a great meeting to be a part of it. And then for the month of August, I just attended some of the events throughout the city, the National Night Out for the Police Department. I saw our resource officers, they had a little pop-up. I didn't know if you were there, I couldn't see if you were there. Okay, well, they had a pop-up out there. I thought that was amazing to be represented, that our school offices were represented at that event in, for the Marietta Police Department's National Night Out. They did a fabulous job out there. And then I went to, I'm just giving you updates, you know, part of the transparency component, I think to my colleague's point is, one, as, as board members, when we go out in the community and we go out to represent the district, I think it's fair that you know where we go to, where we've been representing you, because that's where you get the pulse and the heartbeat of the community. That's where you find out where the things are the parents are concerned about. You meet them in the community, you meet the teachers. It is amazing how many teachers I meet out about in the community and I'm very grateful for it because their feedback is invaluable, let me just tell you. So being out in the community is a great thing. Let's see, we went to, oh, we did the Lisa J. Mills Back to School. I got invited, which this is a great point for anybody to know. Did you know that you can join any school's PTA? My husband is a part of the high school for Vista, because that's where our kid goes now, but you can join any PTA and be a part of it. So someone from the community reached out, they said, hey, Lisa J. is having their open house, would you like to come and would you like to join the PTA? I replied like, sure, I don't have a kid there, but you can join it. And what it does is it helps their membership rolls to, for the, so I helped her out, joined their PTA and was able to go to the event, which I found was super great. The PT, shout out to their PTA, Lisa J. Mills. They did a bang-up job welcoming the community into that space. It was so inviting, it was like aloha themed, they just, you can tell they just put a whole lot of heart into it. So great job to those ladies out there. Well, and guys, I guess I didn't meet everybody, but they did a fantastic job. I hosted a coffee in community for some of the, the trustee area people that I've met throughout this journey. It was fantastic. Again, it's about getting the pulse on the community. So when I sit and speak from this dais, it is not something that I've formulated opinion on my own. It is people that I've met throughout this journey that have, are giving me feedback, they're asking the questions, I'm getting the emails and my job is to be a voice for this community and that's what we do when we get on this dais. And I'm excited about that. It was a great turnout, great, just all around good. And then we participated, there was actually four of us who participated in the Riverside County Office of Education School Board Member Meetup. I had never been to one and they are in the process of revamping this specific organization and I think we came out in number. There was, we, I think Marietta was very well represented and what they're endeavoring to do is, when you're on the local school board, it's hyper-local legislation, right, that we work on here. Well, Riverside County and the gentleman that was hosting this event is making sure that when we cover legislation, that it, there's the national, there's state and then there's the national. And he wants to really focus on river, what's going on in Riverside County. So he pulled together a whole bunch of boards throughout Riverside County, we're represented, Harupa Valley, I mean, there was a bunch. I'm sure the list is only growing, but it was a great collaboration to be able to not only highlight the good things that are happening in Riverside County, but also the things that we can do to affect change in our very own county and not, you know, you could fight Sacramento, I'm sure you could, there's all sorts of stuff that we can do, but when we can collaborate together at the local level, I think we're going to become a more powerful voice in the things that we're doing and fighting for our students and families here in our communities. So that was a great, great meeting. And I think that's it. I'm just grateful to be back. I'm grateful to be a part of this board and I'm learning still so much. Julie reminded me, I have some more classes to do for our little MIG classes and I will continue to do the Masters in Governance class and learning a lot. So I appreciate the opportunity and thank you guys for, thanks for sticking it out here.
All right, thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar. The consent calendar items are voted on collectively as a group upon board member request. Items may be removed from the consent calendar for discussion and individual action. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar for items F1 through F13 as presented?
Bemoved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, motion carries, 5-0. G, action items. G1, a presentation, summer reporting, Dr. Andres.
Thank you, President Purdue and members of the board. Each year, my
Each year, my team presents at this meeting the work that's gone on during the course of the summer and it's all, everything from academics to our HR to, and much of it is facilities. But all these things are happening all summer long. Lots of people think it is a break and yes, myself and our team do squeeze in a few vacation days, but it's also a very busy time of the year. Even though it's not school days, although there are lots of school, learning activities happening with summer school and extended school year, it's a very busy time for us to prepare each year for the school year. It gives our buildings a chance to rest so we can refurbish them as we go through a scale, gives a chance for our educators and leaders and our staff to also take a break for a minute and kind of recreate, which is recreation. If you look at the word recreate and recreate, it's the same word. So we're going to go through our slides here and up first is Mrs. Faith Mcnichjakes, who's going to talk to us about the educational side of our summer.
Good evening. Good to see you, everybody, and hello to everybody and our Marietta community. Vincent, can I? Okay, so I'm going to get us started with an Ed Services update and just kind of giving you an overview of our different summer programs and attendance and that kind of thing. Before I get into it, I do want to say that while most of our district had a break, the management and certificated staff and classified staff, classified staff in big numbers, as I'll point out, we're, you know, on the ground, working with our kids all summer. So we really appreciate them and, and just really appreciate all the services they provided to our kids and our community. So I'll start with Summer Spectacular. It was our second year of Summer Spectacular. Again, it lived up to its name and we hosted the program at three elementary sites and kids took part in two, three-week sessions where they were in attendance from 9 to noon. We served 2,400 students in grades K through six. They were supported by 90 classrooms worth of teachers, support staff, and then two community partnerships. Students would rotate with their grade level and they got to take part in three different enrichment activities. And I've listed some of the classes that they took part in, everything from robotics to STEM to friendship, Spanish, theater, you name it. And even math and ELA skill building, so some of the academic classes as well. So families and students gave us very positive feedback, it provided a great enrichment opportunity and also sparked new skills. My favorite story is about a family and kids that were, I think, in tap dancing, who ended up going out and taking classes in the community because they were so excited by this new learning opportunity, this new interest that they gained over the summer. So really just bringing a lot to our kids. Here are some pictures, just to give you an idea, fully immersed in, in learning new cultures and languages, robotics opportunities, lots of collaboration and connecting learning to the real world. And here you can see some pictures, kids being creative and self-expression, their dramatic play and art, lots of trying new things and building confidence and just lots of skills that even though it might not all be academic in nature while they're taking part in it, these are all going to build into their classroom experiences this school year. For other summer activities or opportunities, we continued our SEED camps. We offered these at the same schools that we had Summer Spectacular so that kids that were there for the all-day daycare, if you will, and summer enrichment could also take part in the Summer Spectacular classes. SEED had 392 students. They had tons of activities ranging from arts, STEM, outdoor activities. I hear they had laser tag, a reptile show at obstacle courses brought on for them, which was really exciting. And the highlight, I'm told, was Water Day, where they had a water slide in Kona Ice. One thing our SEED staff did that I thought was really special is worked with some local communities, community organizations to get some backpacks for some of the students who didn't have those supplies for coming back. And they said that that was a great opportunity to build their excitement for school too. We also had full-day preschool, as you know, July 8th. We moved into our new home in the early learning center at that time, and I think it's even grown from then, but they had 130 children, ages 18 through three years old. A couple of things that Ms. Ozerson said that we had to make sure you knew about is just the, the facility itself is designed in such a great way to meet their needs. The nutrition team and kitchen is just something new that they're really enjoying and they're having family-style dining with the kids and actually with actual dishes that are being cleaned, so just like a new process for them. And then, of course, I know we've all enjoyed the learning, outdoor learning environment that's attached to each classroom and just the playgrounds that are so intentional as well. And they also have that enrollment team onsite all the time, really helping the families right then and there. So just, it's been a great experience for them in that move and yeah, sky's the limit with that building. We're really excited.
Can I just interject something? I was in the community at an event and met with one of the council members who helped broker the deal between the school, and I think I told this to Daniel, raved about our staff. Like, he just was like, "Oh, my goodness." Darren Daniels and Jose, like their names came up in conversation and he just said it has been such an amazing partnership between the district and the church that's there now and they're absolutely thrilled. Like, he just, he just kept talking about how amazing it was. He was super happy, so it was great. Good job. Good job, Jose and Daniel.
Okay. And then just a couple other summer enrichment opportunities. We had an extended year, an adult, at Antelope Hills for our pre-K through eighth grade and then at Marietta Valley for our high school and adult transition programs. This is for our students with disabilities who will benefit from that longer learning opportunity uninterrupted during the summer. We had 197 students participating, 15 teachers, 73 Eights. They used a unique learning system curriculum. The theme this year was, "Let's go to the amusement park." And students did get to participate in Summer Spectacular when there were activities that they could engage in. Additionally, we offered, again, middle school robotics and engineering camps for incoming sixth graders. 190 students took part in this, supported by 30 high school students who served as mentors and program assistants. Great bridge between high school and middle school and a lot of fostering of leadership skills for our students from high school, but also helping those sixth graders make their way into middle school in such a seamless way. And then high school. So this year, high school program was offered at Marietta Valley High School. 345 students completed, a total of 594 courses. Most courses were offered through Ingenuity, which is an online platform. Math and ceramics were offered face-to-face. You can see the various courses that were offered on this slide. We're proud to share that students achieved a 90% pass rate and seven seniors completed their final graduation requirements during the summer. Also of note is our summer melt activities, that we call them, for students that have just graduated and are still finding their way. We provided guidance to 150 students, most who were seeking help with college enrollment for this year, particularly at two-year schools. In partnership with MSJC, we hosted four different workshops that walked students through applications, financial aid, and course planning. All right.
Not so much to navigate.
Yes.
And when you look at our student population, there's still a lot of the student population that would be the first of their family to go on a journey, whether it's a college journey or even vocational journey in some instances, and not knowing how to navigate it can make for a bumpy road.
Yeah, absolutely. And we do so much during the year to try to support students, but sometimes it's a readiness and kids don't know till that point, like, "Yes, now I do need the help." And so I just think it's great that we're offering that support to them. In addition to student programs, we offered a range of summer professional learning for staff. Elementary teachers, of course, started learning about the new math curriculum. We had both elementary and secondary new teachers attending our Teaching Essentials sessions and then also learning about curriculum training. And then other sessions focused on English learner instruction, special education strategies, the use of the EduClima program. And then our preschool teams engaged in collaboration and training to support the launch of our inclusive classrooms at the preschool level, which we're really excited about. All right, before I hand this off, sorry to be long-winded, lots going on and I hope, as you're hearing all those numbers you put together, those are kids that we're continuing to serve over the summer months. But a couple celebrations to share. First of all, all program and fiscal requirements for our 2425 OTEP have been met and it will, our plan will be recommended for approval by the Riverside County Superintendent of Schools, so I did a little cheer around June. A lot of excitement for that. In July, Ed Services held a leadership launch. We brought together, together all of our principals and assistant principals to align around our instructional priorities for the year. Really productive and energizing way to just start the year together as a full group and make sure we're all on the same page as to where we're going as a team. And finally, we're launching our new instructional model this year. It was introduced to staff in our Ed Services Back to School video and will be followed by ongoing conversations and support for administrators and teachers on how to use the model to enhance their classroom instruction. So lots of success with our summer programs paired with these celebrations. I think Ms. Dr. Andrews has talked about with our theme, we really have great momentum as we move forward to this new school year. Very excited and we thank you for your support.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, two more sections.
Oh, whoa.
There's more, there's more than just.
It was like.
It's like, well, it's done. I got it.
I'm ready to go.
Thanks, Nick. It was like, go.
Yes, it's okay. Very important.
It absolutely is. So, you know, summer in HR is all about training and staffing, so that's what you're going to hear about, really. Obviously, we just talked about our annual keenings. We have over 1,000 that have already been done so far. It's the best six to eight hours of your life you haven't done yet. It's like Netflix for safety. Make sure you join that. Along with that training, though, you know, we kind of follow that. By September 30th, we'll have everybody in the district, so we'll have over 3,000 people that will have completed those trainings. Another training we actually did this summer with the advent of artificial intelligence is we had our HR department take training with Google Notebook LM and Gemini. And we had John Fox from our Ed Services team that came in and was very supportive in our staff and helping them create efficiencies using artificial intelligence, so we're not afraid of it. And it was very helpful for our team. On July 25th, we had our Administrative Support Staff Training, that is a district-wide support staff training for all support teams from sites as well as departments. Each department does a combination of training and/or updates for those support staff and then we take some time to allow them to reflect together as teams so that they can benefit their sites. Risk Management has a lot of summer updates, as you can imagine, that's where all those compliance trainings come in. I love that little snake up there, it looks like we're doing snake handler training, but no, we're actually doing training on how not, on how to handle snakes if we happen to come into contact with them on sites. So our Director of Risk Management held that training at the, at the ELC because we want to make sure those little critters are not getting onto the, the sites with our little ones there. Another thing that is new this year is Perry Weather. It's our new application for how we analyze weather and the safety conditions surrounding weather in our district. Some, some things that now our coaches will have is they'll have quick access to saying, "What is the air quality index?", "The wet bulb globe test?", they, we will have all those pieces that come to people immediately. So as a coach, you will know, "Can I keep coaching? Do I have to, how long can I coach for before I have to give water? What's the air quality?", all those things will be coming to people directly. That is actually created, if you, I'm seeing some eyes move, so that is actually created because I have five of our sites around the district, we have, we actually have the system, the detectors there, and that way we can get real-time information to our coaches and our staff at different sites.
I've been thinking a lot, like, the word heat is jumping off the slide at me. About what you guys shared with us in the last school year, that a number of the sites have air conditioning units that have, I don't remember if it's discontinued motherboards or they, they need some form of attention. Are all of our air conditioners working? Because it's hot.
You know what the great thing is? That's going to come up here in just a moment at the next part of our slides. I don't want to take Darren's thunder away because he loves HVAC, it's his thing. But with that, you will hear a little bit about that and the replacement and all those pieces that do take place. But yes, this time of year is very vital for AC to be at each and every one of our sites, for sure.
I'm just thinking of like the intersection between Perry Alert and, "Does the site have AC?"
Yes. So we were talking about the facilities part to make sure we have AC for all of our classrooms and those pieces. The Perry Weather part is really more about outside conditions on when our students can, do example, when can they participate in PE outside versus needing to go under a shade structure when they, when a coach should actually pull kids in because maybe the air quality is not good, like when there's local fires, those types of things too. That will also, all of that is actually updating our annual injury and illness prevention plans, which have been updated and distributed to all sites. Annual safety scorecards have been processed for incentives. Yes, we bribe people to be safe and we bribe our sites to try to give them incentives and we continue our efforts to comply with all state, county, and federal guidelines. Having said that, moving on to the staffing side, we're, you know, obviously HR, that's what we do. We put people in, in places where they are there to support kids in some fashion. And with that, this year, we, on the certificated side, we've had 159 transfers, promotions, or people moving on. And so in some way, we've had to process 159 people. And then we also have things like college field workers, salary advancements due to continuing education, and all those things have been processed on the certificated side. Certificated meaning our teachers, people with credentials, speech pathologists, school psychologists, those types of things.
Are college field workers, are they tutors? Are they interns?
No, they, they are more in the, they can be a couple different things. We do have interns that take place that we will hire as interns, but our field workers are doing work for their university in some format. We do support our local universities in different ways with different, different types of agreements. We have actually multiple on file from several universities locally.
It's like a types of apprenticeships then for the students?
They're getting the experience required by their university in, in the process of their continuing education. On the classified side, we have a lot of new hires, promotions, and transfers as well. We've processed over 201 when you include Summer Spectacular and all of the extended school year pieces. We have another 250-plus movements of some type. And with that, that is human resources in a nutshell over the summer. And then I, as we lead into the first day of school, you can see those baskets, we, our HR team took the time to create those baskets for each and every site, went out and delivered them to the front office. So those, those great staff members in the front offices that we know don't always get lunch, even though they're supposed to by law and we hear they do, on that first day, they're working so hard, they have some snacks to eat and get through the day. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Daniel.
Nice job, Rich. Well, good evening, everybody. I want to take a second. When it says business and operations, I'd be remiss if I didn't really recognize business and operations and who we are. That business and operations is made up of business office, fiscal services, maintenance operations, grounds, facilities, transportation, nutrition, technology. And so while historically, most of this presentation has always been focused on the things we do in the world of the trades of building, but I trust that there's a lot of things that have happened over the summer in all the divisions. I'd be remiss if I didn't just speak publicly about our nutrition program. You heard all the things that Ed Services is doing all the summer? Well, we're feeding kids at the same, at all those opportunities, including a summer meals program at Marietta Elementary School. Fiscal services annually, none of this stuff would happen if bills were not paid, payroll wasn't happening. Fiscal service is always straddling during the summer of closing one budget out and starting a new one. And so all, all of the, the real engine, I think, to this whole organization, sometimes it doesn't feel like it is, it is the fiscal services, the world and business world. Transportation, I know there was a lot of concern when we were going through redistricting about meeting the needs of transportation and our, our transportation program throughout this entire summer goes through and details every piece of the Yellow Fleet, in addition to building new routes to meet the needs of all of our kids, inclusive of all of our redistricting efforts. Also, jumping into a little bit of nutrition. Nutrition over the past year, we've been revitalizing all of our kitchens to be able to increase the number of fresh meals that we serve for the children. And so I always say, business services, we are interdependent on one another. None of us can be successful if we're not all working together because when it comes down to updating our kitchens, it's really maintenance and our, our teams who are fortifying each other. And so I'm excited tonight to come here and share a little bit with you about some of the things that have happened over the summer. And so last year, you may remember, there was a lot of exciting things. Well, this year is a little bit different in the sense that what you're going to see tonight is function over thrills is what I'm going to call it. Our summer was made up of, and so the summer work as well, not flashy, it's certainly fundamental of the functioning of our campuses and our school district. One of, in keeping with the theme of safety, where you started tonight, was one of the great accomplishments this summer with our MNO team is we sent all of our MNO employees through OSHA certification for the first time, to my knowledge, in district history. In addition to that, all of our Maintenance Operations Management team went through an OSHA 30, so that's 30 hours of. In addition to that, all of our maintenance operations management team went through an OSHA 30, so that's 30 hours of, of training all focused on workplace safety, health hazards, and employment, employer obligations to make sure we are paying attention, paying attention and focused on our employee health as well. And so we're excited about that. And I think before I get into the next slide, when we, we think about maintenance, I really characterize what is maintenance. It's those, you know, maintenance, we fix it. And so you can see a number of the areas that we paid attention to, a lot of asphalt, a lot of paint, a lot of concrete, playground refreshes, a lot of fencing taking place and attention to fire systems. I really want to bring attention to the fencing over Antelope Hills. If you drive by Antelope Hills, you'll see privacy fencing around that campus. And while we'd love to take credit and support the way we supported that, but really that fencing project for, with privacy fencing on the playground was really credited to the PTA. And so incredible partnership for us. Except they provided the revenue and we were able to provide the skill. Getting into facilities, I, because maintenance fixes it, facilities builds it. And so we're the new learning enrichment center has been talked about greatly tonight. I think we're to that place where phase one is completed and now we're moving on to phase two, which will be a transportation, a training facility. Our adult transition expansion and rehabilitation across the street took place this summer. We also have a warehouse next door called, we could be our McAlbie warehouse. And so we relocated the print shop from ATP over to the warehouse to make room for our new parents there. And so our parents here, you can see it there, it's just blank carpet right now, but we're getting ready to make sure it's ready for technology and furniture to come in there. We also moved our nutrition services group, who used to be work back here in the physical area, gave them more space in their own space over in the McAlbie warehouse. So if you have an opportunity over there, drop in to see her in the tourism division. Merida Elementary School, last year we had the built new building. This summer, we had an opportunity to complete the project by the Merida, the Merida Elementary Path of Travel. DSA requirement for us to update our ADA pathways. And lastly, we participated in a lot of controlled campus signage as you walk onto all of our elementary school campuses, new signage signifying that patrons and families must check in at the office, really with focusing on that safety and increasing a presence of expectations for our community as they walk onto our school campuses. The grounds, oh, yes, ma'am.
After a question about nutrition services, but yeah, done. I recall, I don't remember what meeting it was, but I recall a few months back talking about some of the budget changes from the national level down impacting nutrition services. Have we had to make any adjustments?
I could ask Jill, we, I think we're always making adjustments and are having to come. It's interesting, I've only been working in this division for about three years. I marvel at how much new information comes out from the state and the national level as it relates to our nutrition program. There are tweaks and things that come out. Jill, do you want to make reference to some of the changes that have come forward?
Fine, wait down. In terms of funding, I think the biggest impact for us is universal free meals for the district. And then we've also elected something called a community eligibility provision. So all students eat for free in this district and actually that increased our revenue. The way that the numbers work out, it actually built up our revenue pretty substantially. So we're in very good standing.
The other question I had about nutrition services is, you know, you, you see things like in the news about over the summer, a lot of school districts instituted like home delivery services because kids were, and their families were fearful of leaving their homes. Did we experience that here?
We did not experience that. We did do what's called summer feeding program or summer meal program at all of our, our sites that we had ELOP and seed. And then we also partnered with Merida Library and did lunch at the library at Merida L. So we had a good turnout from our community in terms of, you know, how, how it compares to previous years. So I think we're, we're in line and it didn't, that didn't have an impact.
Well, one thing, Jill's going to be humble, not tell you this, but over the past couple of years of the new local mills, we've over doubled the number of meals we serve to our kids out of our original facilities that are relatively small. A lot of school districts have one large kitchen, pull all the food to the school site, and then a day we deliver it. We don't do that. We have kitchens with kitchen staff preparing meals at each one of our schools. And then, so last year we had to increase staffing. Now with ELC, we're going to be increasing staff. But there just be, we need to build the needs of the growing population at the ELC as well.
Yeah. So basically we doubled our meals, but we didn't double our staffing. So as you can see, when you're, we're still in the process of aligning those things. So we're, we're in good shape right now.
An aspect, I don't mean to like hone in on that, but like when kids are dealing with food insecurity and sometimes the only meal they get is at school, it's like a critical element for them to be able to learn. So like, having that available to the kids is amazing.
Yep. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Is that funding from, is that federal funding and state?
Federal and state.
Grounds, you know, our grounds program this, the summers are really was involved in a number of support projects. Anytime the grounds gets torn up by us doing a playground or whatnot, grounds has to come in and clean up after us. But largely this year, grounds was highly involved in Merida Valley varsity and JV baseball fields, varsity softball field renovations. So if you go by those facilities, they have pretty much brand new field. Dorothy McLeehaney, we did some tree removal because we had some planters and some, they're, they're actually like concrete bleachers that look out to, onto the fields that the trees were cracking all the concrete. So we mitigated the concrete issue, pulled out the trees, planted new trees and fixed the planters. Also, we did a couple of beautification projects, one at AHA in front of the school and at Merida Mesa. In addition to the ELC, if you go on the ELC campus there, some of the turf near the playgrounds was all done by our grounds team. In addition to those planters that you'll see in the picture up there, they handcrafted those and made those for Kathleen's program. And so one of the most exciting parts to the MNO team is I call it leveling up. Historically in our district, we've had to be able to outsource to some of the skilled trades because we didn't have people in the district to be able to take care of that. I think we're saving so much more money because our trade, our people are leveling up, learning new skills, being able to do new things for, on behalf of our community, be it, you know, forming up and pouring concrete, new, new turf, you know, all these new skills that people are bringing to the table. It's allowing us to be able to do the work in house and forego paying a contractor. Now, the end of the day, we do have to work on Saturdays and Sundays sometimes to get it done. But oftentimes, there's so much more ownership when our people are doing the work. Operation side, those are the folks who are cleaning things. Our operation team, not only do they clean rooms and get things prepared over the summer for all of our teachers, they, they are in charge of all the flooring throughout the district. And so we had some carpeting refreshes across the district, six classrooms out of AHA Buchanan had a lot of work done, the kitchen, 15 classrooms with flooring. Thompson had a class done. Mr. Mary High School had new carpet in the science lecture hall, two classrooms in the gymnasium, MCA three classrooms, and of course, Merida Mesa and MB had the gyms for redone. That is something we kind of do on the cycle to try to get in front of it. We had to learn the hard way because we had a gym floor several years ago go bad on us. And so our operations teams are really carefully monitoring our floors because it's really expensive if you're not doing preventative maintenance. And technology, I'm super proud of our technology department. They grow by leaps and bounds annually. But this summer, we had a little bit of a project that wasn't really a want to do, but a have to do. We had to install 2,200 new phones across the district or, to use a John Pratt phrase, our last, our last phones were carrying into pumpkins. They had the, the company went bankrupt and so caused us to move forward with new phones. So Jacob and his team are in the process of working out all the details and the bugs with that replacement. So something to look forward to. I'm still trying to figure out my phone, but we'll, hopefully I don't have to answer it too much. Raptor technology upgrade. So you guys have probably heard some of our features, Raptor emergency responses. And so Raptor right now is, we're going through all the drilling right now at the school sites, but it's all supported by the technology program. We installed Chrome on all student devices. That extends the life of all of our, our student devices. And again, ELC, NPR, audio visual package, all the networking infrastructure, all the cabling at the ELC, all done inside by our technology folks. And so, and lastly, the ELC electronic door locks, hopefully that will be a, a sample that we can hope, we can look forward to across the district. And so we're excited to be able to have a lot more folks be able to see that and what it can do for campus safety. And lastly, just want to say thank you for those who are able to attend the ribbon cutting at the ELC. Been in the district a long time and have been able to attend two ribbon cuttings at high schools and been at elementary schools. And I think the ELC probably had the largest number of people there celebrating that opening. So I think it was long overdue. And so, but I thank you all for your support and your commitment to the kids at this, this school district.
It was a really nice event.
Thank you.
I mean, on the, on the trades, like they have more trades that are internal now. I just wonder if there's some potential for some additional CTE pathways there, like carpentry is a skill that is becoming more and more scarce. And if we have internal people that have that trade, is there opportunities for apprenticeships?
You know, you know, we have not, we've talked about some of it. I think, you know, I'll talk personally. We would love to be able to grow our own. I think working in HR, we've, I think we, this district prides itself on the number of young people who come back and serve our community, being able to watch the fire science group tonight. Seeing one of the captains is one of my former students at Mr. Mary High School. I get warm and fuzzy when I see that type of, you know, like come back and serve in a leadership capacity. We have not, and I think it comes down, really comes down to dove deep in that because in our, in our district, we are, we're moving pretty fast. You know, we have a couple plumbers and what are they doing? They're working a plumber. They're, you know, they don't really have time to teach on the side. We have an electrician. They, they are, they are moving and grooving and don't have a whole lot of time. So we're not really built for that. Doesn't mean that we can't. I think it is something about, we have to be, we run very lean, you know, during tough budget times. We still have the same amount of air conditioners, same acreage of lawns to mow and whatnot. And sometimes we're now, we're doing it with less people. But there was, I think it's just hard, I'm hardened with the whole idea of our leadership team being able to encourage our people to be able to do more. And once, some people, and I go back to your, your band experience, I always say Vince and our supervisor and we'll fix that. We got people. Vince inside of our grounds department, he's kind of like a, he's like a band student. In, in the band activity, the Donald Wade used to always remind me that when you master band music inside, you're rewarded with getting more or harder material. I likened our ground scenes and our maintenance teams to that. When they've mastered things, they're hungry to learn more and be able to have ownership of things. And so that has not always been our history in this district, but I think it's become our normal. And I'm just excited for that. Going back to your ACs. So yes, ACs are operable. We have one in our district that is not being, is not operable right now. It's getting ready to be replaced. It's on order. Thankfully, it's not impacting a lot of students. It's on the stage at Mr. Mary High School in the, in the backstage area. But we, we do work hard to be able to keep our ACs working. Yesterday, first day of school, we had a couple errors and issues that we had to go out and fix and all were able to be fixed. So any other questions? Nick, I know you want me more up here. So I'll stay up here as long as you need.
So, let me just add one little piece based on your question. We are working to become our own registered apprentice shop so that students can apprentice with us and receive that recognition through the state of California as a registered apprentice. Currently, we have two students working as interns in our communications department. If you saw the back to school video that was recorded, that was recorded in my office and was recorded by our student, Thomas, he did that. And if you saw the signs that were held and people taking pictures of like, hey, first day back to school or fifth grade or whatever it was, that, those were generated by a student. And so we're trying to, we're working in that direction, but specific to the trades. We have a very small, very, very small fledgling construction trades program that's operating out of a portable. So we don't actually have an appropriate space to teach out of, but we do have a very small fledgling program. Just to clarify, there we go.
All right, wonderful. So moving on to item G2, consideration and approval of attorney engagement agreement with Tyler Law, LLP. And it calls for a motion.
I move to table.
Can I second that?
You can.
Okay, I second it.
Let's do a roll call vote. Nancy? Yes.
Are we voting, table?
Tables, yes.
Yes.
Myself, no.
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 Yes.
Vote fails. Calls for a motion for approval.
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote, Nancy?
Point of order.
I would like to make comments.
So discussion, let's have a discussion.
Several people have commented on this, but I'm not surprised that it's going to be ignored. I don't understand why we need to hire this law firm. It's not an educational law firm. It feels political to me. We're deficit spending. We have a board majority that just voted to lay off employees, which means we cut student services. But it seems like you're perfectly okay with spending our tax dollars on a firm that has, does not even have education attorneys. They're not part of our JPA. The JPA helps protect us financially. So if we really needed this firm for legitimate reasons, and I'm pretty sure we don't, put them in the JPA. What services do you want to cut to pay for this? Can't cut the teacher supply budget because from what they're telling me, they don't have a supply budget. Most of them have no supply budget or it's really small. So they're buying all their own supplies. If we have money to do this, give the teachers a supply budget so that they can buy supplies for their kids. How about focusing on the needs of our kids and creating the best possible education experience for our children? And we don't need a, a political law firm. I'm done.
Any other comments, discussion?
Tell us why.
Yeah, it's also not clear to me why we need another law firm. So the school district already has, I believe it's four law firms on retainer that are competent and experienced in education law. I have not heard what it is that those law firms that are currently on retainer are deficient in or that are not able to service the district for. The other thing that caught my attention is the contract that's being proposed with this law firm specifically says to represent the board. So what's going on with the board that I'm not aware of that requires us to need unique and specific representation separate from the district as a whole? That doesn't make sense to me. We have had no prior discussion about this. There has been no guidance or information provided from the members of the board that are proposing this or from the administration about why we need this. We haven't seen any commentary from the other law firms that we have on retainer about why they could not address whatever this mysterious need is. I know one of my colleagues on the board said that we shouldn't be afraid of litigation. So is the plan of this board majority to involve us in litigation that I'm unaware of and we need this representation? I'd like to be clued in into exactly what the plan is, why this board specifically needs additional representation that cannot be provided by the retainers that have already been paid. And with our enrollment decreasing, where we've been on a trajectory of deficit spending for some years now, why we would justify this? I did the motion to table because there's all kinds of unanswered questions, like always, every time our board. Every time our board majority brings controversial items, it's without facts, it's without full information, it's without transparency, and the three of them push through votes. And I'm very alarmed at the things that I heard from the public speakers today about potential conflicts of interest. I'm very alarmed by that. All of you should be as well. I have a lot of unanswered questions.
Would you like some answers?
I would love them.
Okay, that would be great. So if you direct them in a form of a question, so you had mentioned that there was a board member who said that we shouldn't be afraid of litigation. So was there a discussion about litigation or was there not? Because it sounds like in your comments that there was some discussion about how we're represented.
You would have to ask Ms. Schmidt, she was the one that made the comment in open forum.
It feels like there was some discussion. So one of the things that I think is important is we need to know if it's true or not, right? Because if it's not true, then we shouldn't be bringing it up. So there are conversations that we have as a board, there's five of us, and unfortunately, some of the things that come down from the state are very political. And there are things that come down from the state that our legal teams do not want to deal with or touch. One of them happened to be a concern that I had way back and we've had plenty of conversations, I've had plenty of comment from this position, which is why does the state of California think that it's fair and right to underfund our district with LCAP money? And originally, I got a response from our legal team that said, you're right, Mr. Pardue. You have standing because you're not getting treated fairly under the law. Then when I became board president, as some of the speakers have come up and said, well, it's not quite that, you know, I'm not too sure about this. Well, we have differing legal opinions about that. And that came from the same human beings. So my concern as board president is why are my constituents, because I represent my constituents? In fact, this is a really interesting thing. I had, I don't remember who said it. They said, this is one of the first boards that they can think of that was thinking about their constituents. It's time to give voice to constituents. In other words, taxpayers in the community want to know, why is it that the state of California thinks it's okay to rip us off? I'd like to have answers to that. I'd like to have answers to that just as a taxpayer. Additionally, there's AB 495 in which the state of California, not Nick Pardue, not anyone here on this board, decided to throw some politics in there and say, hey, we want to be able to take your kid out of school anytime we please. What, what human thinks that's okay? Talked about trampling all over someone's constitutional rights. We absolutely need some legal representation when you have such a hostile state. Keep in mind, the same state government decided to pass legislation that would allow students to talk back to the teachers and allow them to stay in the classroom. You have threats to teachers staying in the classroom, destroying the learning environment. And apparently, according to our legislature, which unfortunately, a public never holds them accountable, our state assembly and our state senate is never held accountable. It takes about a decade for them to figure out any of the legal, the laws that they pass that are so insane. And unfortunately, they are funded. We ignore them. I'll tell you who doesn't ignore them. CTA does not ignore them. They fund them. All that stuff comes down. I'd love to hear from someone who's willing to take that on, to tell me where our parents' rights are, where do we stand legally, and how can we defend our teachers, the taxpayers, the parents, and students of this community from a hostile state that wants to and seems intent on turning this into a state-run school? This is a republic if we can keep it, and that requires an educated populace. And unfortunately, we have way too many adults that stick their head in the sand and allow that to happen. So that is why, by the way, to have this, we are voting so that we could just hear them speak. And while we're on that point, as we talk about trying to keep track of our money, we have a parliamentarian here. Mr. Daniels, just, I'm gonna, are they paying you extra to sit in this seat? Yep. Do you get paid extra if we keep going over? Do you get overtime? Did not think so. So our employees don't get paid by the hour. Lawyers do. Our parliamentarian's a lawyer. Do you get paid by the hour to sit in that seat, sir? Thank you very much. Did I request you to be here tonight, sir? The board has not. I, I have not. As a board president, I have not asked you to be here. In the past, we have. I did not ask you to be here tonight, sir.
I think we definitely need him here. You don't want to be held accountable for anything.
That's wonderful. I'm going to finish my point. My point is, we're more than willing to spend money on the things that we think are okay. And we've had a number of organizations, not to mention some false trumped up accusations before, where we run up bills that are ridiculous. This board decided not to travel all the way to Washington DC to meet with a dang congressman in DC. That was tens of thousands of dollars. We are very aware of our limited resources and we're very aware that we need to be responsible with them. But that does not mean that we will spend money freely on some things and then completely just, hey, we don't even want to spend a dime to stand up for parents and our constituents? Absolutely, we do. And if this law firm donated the IE Family PAC, did they donate to Nick Pardue? No, they did not. Did the CTA donate to you? Did MEA donate to you, to either one of the candidates up here? Absolutely. By tens of thousands of dollars. Let's not get it twisted here and talk about a conflict of interest, a ridiculous conflict of interest. But we, I've never heard one of you recuse yourself, not once. And I've seen you defend people's jobs that were completely a waste of taxpayer dollars from this dais, unabashedly unashamed.
So you think you're talking about social workers being a waste of taxpayer dollars?
I'm talking about if we're wasting money on staff we don't need, 100%.
So can you clarify? So you just listed off all kinds of things. You want to challenge LCAP funding, you wanted to challenge AB 492. So it's still not clear to me, is it the intention of this board to sue the state of California?
I'll answer that question because I would like the other two board members to have a chance to speak. The reason that we're bringing this law firm on is to get their legal advice so we can have a conversation. No one's interested in entering a lawsuit unless it's going to help benefit the constituents in this community, the parents and the families that attend these schools. And furthermore, if our families don't feel safe about sending their kids to these schools, our moments will drop further, especially after, I will tell you, we already have a prominent pastor saying if AB 495 passes, do not put your kids in those schools and you better leave California. That is a true statement.
So if, if that's your intention is just to seek legal advice, why would we hire a law firm that has no experience in education law?
Because they have experience in parental rights litigation. So it's not a matter, you know, the truth is, is their hourly rate comparable to the current ones we have on retainer, Ms. Munoz, is actually less expensive than the ones that we currently have hourly rate. So if you're gonna, I mean, I, I requested the numbers because I asked, are we comparing apples to apples? And is this representation? And just to be clear, so the publicless care about this, we are not dismissing any other law firm. There's Mr. Pearl's here, he's with DWK, I think, yeah, DWK. We never asked him to, did we dismiss your services, sir? For the, for the firm? Not that I'm aware of. So this is simply an added layer of protection for the families in our community. So for you to put this out that this is some political partisan move is, frankly, is quite offensive. But that being said, as parents, as a mom of four kids, one still in this district, you know, whether I had a kid in this district or not, I would still actively, actively find someone like Bob Tyler and Associates who will fight for my parental rights and fight for the parental rights of the people that I represent. I said it earlier, I go to these public events, I sit with these families, I have people come to my home to talk to me about this very issue. And they asked about specifically AB 495. What is the district going to do about this? Are you familiar with AB 495, Mr. Pearl? That's okay, that's okay. This is to my point. And I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the expertise you bring to the table when we need you. But the truth is, is adding Tyler and Associates, you guys make, making it seem as this is horrible, horrible thing. Why can't you see for the truth that it is? They specialize in advocating for parental rights. You're up here, for God's sake, you guys are, well, Ms. Munoz is a parent, I'm a parent, the parents ain't here. How many parents would like to be able to say that you have somebody advocating for your children in the district, in a courtroom, anywhere else? This is our, these are our, these are my kids that I am referring to now. If I have to fight for Ms. Esma, those kids over there, I will absolutely go to the mat for this. Absolutely, 100%, not holding back. So to question whether or not we want this law firm to be an added layer of protection for the families in our district, I think you should question where you stand in protecting the families of our district. Listen, Ms. Young.
I don't want to go there.
No, listen to me. I have been nothing but kind to y'all in what you're saying, but to bring our names up in this space and to tarnish our reputations in the public space, part of this dais when I sit here.
And you've seen the cases that this law firm pays a loser and how much public funds go to pay off the lawsuits.
How many public funds have been utilized in this space right here against frivolous lawsuits against our own people on this dais?
And you work with, because they don't have any experience in education law. That's why they can't use these daisies.
Having a law firm with 15 lawyers on your firm, you have the ability like Einstein. If he didn't, or not Einstein, it was Henry Ford. If he didn't have the answers, he went and found an expert. Easily, Bob Tyler and Associates can bring on an expert in the field if we need it for educational law. Because he has them.
That's a direct answer, Eleanor, to the criticism that many of the speakers brought up, is on their rate schedule, they specifically list attorneys that are contained in the contract. None of those listed have experience with educational law. Friends, say that I didn't want women to leave them, you're not being transparent. At the point.
I was actually, my, I was actually, it was my turn to speak because y'all spoke already. This was my space. This was my space, my space now. And you know, I hate to get like so hard-nosed about this because this is not my personality, first of all. But I cannot sit here any longer and have you decide that we are making these decisions for some political stupidity. That doesn't even make any sense. So I'm going to say this last comment, and I want the public to know that definitively, this added layer of protection for families specifically in regards to AB 495 coming down the pipe from the state of California, you should look up what that does. It gives anybody walking into the school district the right to sign your child without parental consent out of the school district. That is AB 495. So when you talk about political wherewithal and these, all these partisan things, and it is not my cup of tea. My cup of tea is here to defend the parents and the families, and I will do whatever it takes to defend it against this 495 that's coming down the road here that most people aren't even aware of. They aren't even aware of. It's, and it's not 492, Ms. Munoz, it's 495. Everybody should look it up. Everybody should forward that bill to everyone and their family who has kids in the state of California, that is shocking and is just ridiculous. And if that passes, and it wasn't Pastor Tim Thompson, Ms. Tomasi, who put that, it is actually a pastor in Southern California somewhere, Jack Nibbs, who said that if this bill passes, pull your kids out of the school district. Listen, listen. I, you know, I apologize, I'm not supposed to address the evil in the public, but that's where we're at. So let's take a vote.
I agree. There is no doubt that you do. The reality here is, we'd like to call the question. Will roll call vote?
Requires four votes in order to be successful. It requires a second to call the question.
Okay. Sure. This is one of the things that I'm just trying to understand, what you're trying to say. You're trying to say we cannot vote on the motion. The discussion's ended. I don't, let's not call the question then. We don't need two thirds vote. We just want to end discussion.
In order to end discussion, you utilize the proper tool. It's called call the question. It requires, under Robert's rules, it requires a second. And then, once you have a second, there's no debate on whether to, whether to call the question, but it requires a two thirds vote, which five is 3.33333, so you need four votes.
I have a question for you about this. We were talking about trying to have this conversation as we're having this conversation. You're advocating for this idea that we can just filibuster this meeting and go until midnight.
I'm not advocating for anything.
To have it come to a close.
How do we end discussion without having to try to get?
They think we get this last?
To agree, yes, this is a real problematic thing. I'm not a huge fan of this. And from what I understand, this isn't even a procedure we necessarily have to follow.
You'd also do. Robert, our ruling.
Robert's Rules of Order just is suggested to keep a civil meeting. But what I don't like is it's not civil if you're going to continue to grandstand and filibuster every time you don't like something that comes up. And that's what I'm seeing. And so, I'm responsible, I'm responsible for maintaining order, have an orderly meeting. And I know the last time we played this game, it just was a talk-a-thon.
This, let her finish your comment. She could have finished it by now.
Well, I would agree with you, except for the past experiences that have happened.
I have the floor now or are we, they'll call the question?
Well, we're going to listen to you and we're hopeful that you will listen and follow our conversations as well.
And that's exactly why this board majority doesn't want to have a parliamentarian because they don't want to be held accountable to Robert's Rules of Order. So watch out, Marietta, for Wild Wild West and the MVUSD School District to come. And I want to actually, I feel like it's really disingenuous and I'm going to say a bold-faced lie to say that they want to add the Tyler Law Forum to protect the families of Marietta. No. The contract specifically says that the scope of the representation is to this board. And so I have to wonder, what do they have planned? I'm really concerned about that. I, when you talk about, are you comparing apples and apples when you talk about the rate schedule of one law firm versus the rate schedule of another? It's not apples and apples because not every law firm, not every attorney is the same. You pay based off of the expertise, the intellectual property that that law firm and the lawyers within that law firm bring to the table. And so, when you try and make a comparison between a law firm with zero educational law experience and law firms that have represented this district successfully, that bring that expertise, that intellectual property to the table, you're talking about apples and pineapples. So that's a false equivalency. Our board majority thinks all of you are stupid, they pull on your emotional strings. Want to talk about what's true and what the facts are? This is absolutely politically motivated. They're following the same playbook as Chino, the same playbook as Tobacco Valley, and the result of those things was millions of dollars of taxpayer funds wasted.
Is that the end of your comment?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, one of the reasons why we want to have a second opinion is because we allow this kind of grandstanding filibustering bluster on any topic that you disagree with. So it's, I think it's an embarrassment. I would like to have us call the question. Let's, let's see how that works. Roll call. Ms. Young? Oh, all right. Thank you. Ms. Young?
This, what are we voting on here to?
Call the question to end discussion.
I do have a question. Do you ever go back and watch yourself at board meetings? I do have a question, do you ever go back and watch yourself at board meetings?
Yes.
Breaks?
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries 5-0, now vote on consideration and approval of attorney engagement agreement with Tyler Law. Ms. Young?
No.
Mr. Pardue, yes? Mrs. Briggs?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mrs. Munoz? Motion carries 3-2. Item G3, approval of agreement for school-linked partnership and capacity grant. This calls for a motion.
移到了 A second. Oh, no, I'm sorry, what I said on this? We have to discuss.
Can we open it up for discussion?
It is open for discussion. There is not a second, there is not a second as of yet.
Oh, can I go ahead and say my?
Well, since there's no second, it looks like this is not moving forward.
Somebody want to second it so we can talk?
Second.
All right, discussion.
I have some comments. This actually, so it's, and if I misspeak, somebody please correct me. So it's a bit over an $800,000 grant to the district to provide student services. And I, okay, I understand, so it would be things like counseling or other things students might need, it could help them with behavior. We've had so many teachers come in here talking about the behavior issues they're dealing with, like, and I know it's real, I'm a teacher, I have experienced it myself. So this grant would cost the district nothing, and it not only provides services for the students, it provides training for the teachers to help them work with these students. And, yeah, did I misspeak?
Just, just a little bit.
Okay.
Let me just provide a little more clarification. This is a capacity building grant, not a service grant.
Okay.
So what this does is this allows the district to prepare to provide additional services upon request of a family, will be our model for the case of mental health services, and we can contract with outside providers to provide those services when parents want to participate. This, this grant allows us to create a space for this to happen at, it allows us to establish a mechanism for billing the state system for these services, but this grant is not to provide services, it's in preparation for future services.
And since, hey, we get this grant, when we bill and get reimbursed, that gives us the ability to keep allowing these services.
Should, should the district proceed in this area?
Yeah.
It would allow the district a mechanism to build the state of California for services provided, and our intention is we would offer those services after school, so we want to keep kids in class.
Yeah.
Or on weekends, and either contract with other service providers who are licensed therapists, people who do this, but we would do that with parent involvement, that would be our model. But this is not, this is not.
Okay.
The applica, this is simply preparing for.
Okay.
That work.
But it could help staff, because if you help these kids with some of the issues they have, you know, it can solve some of these behavior issues. To me, it seems like such a win-win for the district, for the students, for the staff.
Are you done, Nancy? Yes, I was going to go next, but I'm just.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, I didn't want to interrupt. So I met with Dr. Andrus last Friday, and I spent like an hour and a half with him to find out more about this, so I could learn about it. So I realized that $804,000 is a lot of money. Schools need money, I get that. But this is quote-unquote free money that comes from the state. Well, as we all know, nothing is free, so that made me dig deeper to see what strings are attached. So like I said, I met with Dr. Andrus to gather information, and I'm just going to read some of the points that came up in our meeting that were important about this grant. So basically, California doesn't have enough services to provide mental health services for all, all of the people, so they're just over-impacted. So what they're trying to do is get schools, leverage schools to help with this. The grant will help schools put together, place people and systems to offer mental health services. And the services, and correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Andrus, these services will be provided at the Parent Resource Center.
That is our intention, to provide it there.
Okay. The state wants to, so these aren't really in order, but the state wants to leverage schools to provide mental health services. And the USD will become, if we accept this grant and go forward, will become a health provider. If parents don't have insurance, Medicaid can be billed. Teachers and counselors can maybe make referrals, because I asked, can they make referrals? And that was a maybe, correct?
That's a maybe, and just going back one step, we don't become a health provider, we simply facilitate that, because we have such close contact with students and families, we become kind of the, lack of better word, intermediary between the actual provider and like, we have a space and a place and a funding mechanism to take care of it.
And the district will have to abide by some of the guidelines of the grant, so there's guidelines, and we'll probably have to abide by some of those guidelines. The grant is for $804,000 of one-time money. The money we reserve, we receive from reimbursement from the claims, from the medical claims, is how we will pay to staff the center and continue adding to it. Another way we could collect money with this is the state will pay $2 for every survey they give to students about their mental health, similar to the panorama survey.
It all depends on the fee schedule that this grant talks about.
Yep. So in addition, the webinar titled "Navigating the CYB HIV Schedule," the state's third-party administrator will engage in blind billing to avoid inadvertently alerting parents that their child is receiving mental health care, whether paid for by medical policy of the family's commercial health insurance. So there is some blind billing that's going to be, could happen, and parents would not know that their child is receiving mental health care, that could happen. This is very concerning to me as a parent. As a parent, educator, and community member, I see red flags all over this free money. Our district, in my opinion, our district needs to focus less on mental health services and more on academics. It is not a school district's job to provide medical services. It is our job to teach children and prepare them for a successful future. And the more we ask children about their mental health problems, the more mental health problems they have. So I am against going forward with this.
It's interesting, Dr. Anders, because when I took the tour for, with you and, oh my goodness, I know Ellen, Ellen, at Norco, my specific request, I said I'm 100% in favor of a parent engagement center. I said it from the dais. I was shocked to see this thing come up on the agenda, like, truly shocked, because what it doesn't say, I mean, there's a lot, and we really, I had to, I didn't even know Christine had done all that, but I actually did the research on it behind the program, and I watched the one-hour fee schedule, I watched it, and it's true, there's a blind billing that happens. As a parent, if my 12-year-old daughter decides to go in and get services through our parent engagement center, they bill my insurance, but I don't get to see what service was provided if my 12-year-old says, oh, no, no, I don't want my mom in the room, she can have those services provided for her. It's a little deceiving, I mean, excuse me, not a little, it's a lot deceiving. So, you know, that being said, with the whole, I understand the mental health crisis, and I understand people need services, I realize that. The wonderful thing about our city, the city of Marietta, is that launched a three-year partnership with CareSalus to close the gap to access mental health care and wrap around, this is important, wrap around social, community, and medical services. Through this partnership, CareSalus was named as best practice by a U.S. Conference of Mayors and Business City Council. So in support of 120,000 Marietta residents, now remember, these are all free services right now. They would just do the same thing that the, this bill, or this proposed agenda item is asking us to do in our schools, is already being provided in our city. It's in our city. So in support of 120,000 Marietta residents, as well as school district and city, this is right off of their website, by the way, CareSalus serves as a central navigation hub to connect individuals to providers and services. Through a dedicated QR code, phone number, or email, every resident connects live with a care companion who assesses their needs, navigates the mental health care system with them, finds culturally relevant providers, locates wraparound social services, secures appointments, and remains available to the resident as an ongoing service. CareSalus's coordination services and cloud-based platform enable the city of Marietta to aggregate access to all available behavioral, mental, social, and community services, and to enable support for every resident irrespective of insurance, language, culture, and need. First responders, homeless teams, city councils, city officers, libraries, parks, recreations, nonprofit organizations, churches, CBOs, and even HR residents refer and city employees to CareSalus. The data and insights gathered through the CareSalus platform will be used to inform city programs, policies, and strategies, and ensuring the ongoing well-being of residents and city staff. So it's very interesting, you know, with everything that's going on with the state of California and what they're bringing down to our local level board here and our, and what we do here at the local level, it's interesting that $804,000 does sound like a great amount of money, because it is, it's a lot of money. But I was under the understanding, Dr. Anders, when you and I had the conversation about the parent engagement center being built, when you, Ellen, and I went to that space, that there was already some set aside money that you could access to make this center happen.
Let me clarify a couple of things. Thank you, those are good questions. Yes, we have set aside some money to equip that, we could then reallocate those funds if we took advantage of this dollar, of this grant, to use that space for that. If not, we have another funding source that would come from a different location.
Okay. So you understand my stance here, I mean, I guess you don't even necessarily need to understand it, but I'm just telling you, as, in the public space, it looks like this is a lot of money that could benefit the school. But the, the reality of it is that everything on the other end of this entire program is extremely questionable to me. The fact that my children can get services using my insurance card that we pay for, my husband, my husband's company, they can bill them, I watched the whole thing, they can bill my husband's insurance and my insurance, and I would not know what services are provided to my 12-year-old. That's a little questionable.
Let me just restate what I said earlier in response to Mrs. Schmidt's comment, because you brought up blind billing, and the state's system does allow for that in places where the district allows that. What I said was that we wanted to engage families in that activity, and we didn't want to provide services without parents' knowledge. So we would establish a system where parents and students would come collectively together, and we wouldn't proceed until parents were involved. That would be.
Sure, and I hear.
We'd proceed.
I hear what you're saying, but the challenge is, is then you violate HIPAA laws based on the state of California law and 12-year-olds being allowed to have services, right, in the natural space and in a regular doctor's office. So they even actually brought that up in the video, that it would violate HIPAA laws. So they were very cautious about saying, yes, this is free money, this is amazing, but in that same turn, in that same video, Doc, which is supposedly helping, was supposed to help promote this program, it was almost, it was really kind of duplicitous, because it talked about, well, yes, we can have this free money, but remember, there's the HIPAA laws and students have rights, and which do I believe students have rights? 100%. But in the space where my 12-year-old can't drive, doesn't pay for the stinking insurance, first of all, and then gets the services without knowledge, that to me, just that one big red flag, and then throughout the whole program, there's a whole bunch more. So just that being said, that's where I'm headed with that.
Thank you.
So I'm glad that you have awareness to HIPAA laws, because it might be news to some, but even with your private insurance today that you pay for, whether it's through your employer, or you pay for it on the exchange in the open market, your 12-year-old can get access to mental health services, and it can get billed to your insurance, and you don't have to be made aware of it, because the actual reality is that patients do have a right to privacy, and at a certain age, your child is able to get care without you being fully informed about the nature of that care. That can happen with your private insurance today. HIPAA privacy rights exist in all facets of life. The charge of this board is to put policies in place that this district would follow. And so when I hear Dr. Anders say that the policy that they're proposing that would be the foundation of how we would use these services would require some form of informed consent of the parent before they would even get to the point of providing care when HIPAA would apply, so this is pre-delivery of any healthcare services happening, I think that that's actually a fabulous idea, and within the purview of this board, to not move forward with this investment of dollars into the district and not figure out how to make it work to address those concerns would be another disservice to the kids in this district. We already eliminated behavioral health services earlier this year, this is just another, you know, devil in the coffin, unfortunately for kids that need help.
Did you just hear what I read about CareSalus though, Bissouan?
The same thing is true with CareSalus.
The same thing, though, they have survived their wraparound strategy, patient sugar, right to privacy. Well, then let that happen outside of where we're supposed to do reading, writing, and math.
Schools are not mental health facilities, and as an educator, I'm not prepared, I don't think any of us are prepared to do that. The purpose of schools is to educate students, teach them reading, writing, and prepare them for a future, for college or for career. It is not our job to provide mental health services, it's up to the families, and we're overstepping. And plus, the parent center, as I understood it, was only, was going to be used to give, like, maybe like a homework center or tutoring, like, use a parent center that way, don't use it for medical, again.
I think there's a misunderstanding, Dr. Anders, I know you've said it a couple of times, but it's my understanding from the comments that you made, that no staff of the school district would be providing medical services or being stepping in the shoes of a medical provider.
I would use the word may not, but not must or shall not. And the reason why I say that is because we do have some employees who have appropriate licenses that may be able to provide those services, but they would be done, again, outside of the school day and at a different location, and again, the parent center is primarily the parent center. We just needed a different venue to create that separation between the school day, because we want to keep kids in class.
Right, so no teachers would be asked to.
No.
Behavioral health providers, no administrators would be asked to become behavioral health providers.
No, they'd be the licensed professionals who, that would be their skill set.
And I think the other thing is, the other thing I heard you say that resonated with me, is if we had access to these grant funds, then you could reallocate other district funds to the things that my colleagues say that we should focus on, right? So it actually makes us able to stretch our dollars further than we would be able to without this grant.
That is true, so the dollars that would cover the physical costs of this establishment of the facility and setup, we could reallocate them a different place.
So do you not ever wonder why California is pushing this? Why is California pushing this on every school district? They are. Why? Do we, you need to dig deeper. I met with Dr. Anders to find out why. I, this is why we want this other law firm, because we want a law firm that will represent and hold federal law, will abide by federal law, not just California law, I understand we have to follow California law, but their federal law supersedes that, and Supreme Court decisions. And that, and to this point, this whole thing is why we want this to hear from this other law firm. And that's why you'll lose, just like the other school districts, because the supremacy clause, the 10th Amendment to the Constitution, leaves education to the states. So we're on this ride now, and here we go.
Here we go.
Everybody buckle in. But I've actually seen this program be successful in other states. In Colorado, they have a very similar program, and it has been very beneficial to the health, wellness, and academic achievement of the students in that state. So why is California pushing it? Because there's been models of success in many other states in our country that have proven that when you invest in the mental well-being of students, it has positive outcomes that matriculate to their academic experience and makes them overall better people. But that's your opinion, and that's not actually truth. There's other people who are saying that it does not benefit, and Colorado is not the best state to bring up as an example, because they're a mess, just like. just like we are.
All right. I'd like to just chime in. I'm a giant history nerd, as you might not, maybe some of you know. You guys, in the 1950s, there's something called the Red Scare. And there was this whole thing on communism, and this whole thing resonates. I want you to hear this. This was part of, you know, there was an American Communist Party, for some of you guys might not have known this. And they had a list of goals. You can go online and look it up, because I just did that. And this was the Communist Goals back in the day, right? So this is just a history lesson. Support any socialist movement to give centralized control over any part of the culture, education, social agencies, welfare programs, and mental health clinics. I just found that so interesting. Then I went down further. Dominate the psychiatric profession and use mental health laws as a means of gaining coercive control over those who oppose Communist Goals. Blowing me, it gets better. Discredit the family as an institution. Emphasize the need to raise children away from the negative influence of parents. Attribute any problems that those childrens have to the suppressive influence of parents. When I feel like we are becoming a state-run school, like it feels that way, we are being forced, and then we're going to leverage money to make you do the things that we want you to do. Additionally, we're going to pass legislation that says, parents, you don't have the right to pay attention to what happens to your children. I know it's not the 1950s. I'm not sure anyone knows anything about the Red Scare or the Communist, American Communist Party, and not saying anyone here is. But I am saying that there were people in our history that thought this was a great goal. It was a great goal to destroy our society. And it's feeling that way, right? It really is feeling that way. The problem that I have with all of this is it paves a pathway for some really negative things for teenagers with consequences that go well beyond what anyone here as an educator should even be involved in, to the point that my board members not made. We're about educating kids. I teach economics. I do not need to be counseling kids on their personal decisions in life. There is no point for me to do that. I'm not their parent. I'm going to teach them. I look out for their mental, we always think mental health, like, oh, you're having a bad day, let me cheer you up, let me bring some happiness and joy to you, right? Yeah, that's always something that teachers should try to make it a happy place where kids go. We should not be giving advice about abortions. We should not be giving any advice about gender-affirming care, and yet that's what the state wants us to do. They want that stuff. They are pushing that stuff. I'm telling you right now, if you're not paying attention to legislatures, we had a congressman say, clear as day, that that's what students should be allowed to do, and they can, they can determine their own gender without the influence of parents. Lawmakers have said that. Those lawmakers are pushing the laws that are coming down to this, to our, to our school district. So when the state's trying to dangle this carrot, I don't think it takes a huge leap to say, why are you doing this? I don't have a lot of faith in the state to take care of our children, and I don't know that our community does either. So I'm, I am extremely concerned, and this is a very alarming development.
I'd like to make a motion to vote. Can I make that motion, Mr. Pearl? I move to take the vote.
I have one more comment.
Go ahead.
I like history lessons. I've always loved history. I'm going to share one with you. During the strength of Nazi Germany, when they identified gay, particularly trans Jews in the concentration camps, they sewed onto their jumpsuit a pink triangle so that everybody would know that that person was LGBTQ plus in one way, shape, or form, even though they didn't have that terminology back then. But they had the pink triangle to identify this population of Jews for extermination. And in this school district, with our public outing policy, it's tantamount to a pink triangle that we're putting on students and getting rid of any possible access that they have or support from their district for mental health services. History reliving itself.
Is it true? And this is a real question. Is it true that we have those policies? I find it galling that you would use that as a line to say, yes, we need to make sure that what we say is true. We do not have an outing policy. That is not true. And to say that you're instilling fear, yes, you are instilling fear. You are instilling fear. But there is only one thing that we've ever tried to accomplish, and that is to make sure that parents are protected and their rights are protected. And you twisting the truth has not changed reality. You trying to scare children with this Nazism thing is not helping. That has nothing to do with what we're discussing right now.
What's during?
It is history. Let's call the question. Ms. Young? Oh, I need a second, sorry.
Second.
Ms. Young? Pardue, yes?
Yes. Yes.
All right. Motion passes. Let's vote on item G3, Approval of Agreement for School-Linked Partnerships and Capacity Grant. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Pardue, no? Ms. Briggs?
No.
Ms. Schmidt?
Well.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes.
Motion fails.
Let's remember that when we start laying people off, because we don't have enough money. Thank you.
Thank you for the grandstanding. Item G4, Approval Amendment to Employment Contract for District Superintendent Dr. Ward Andrews, effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2026. That call, I call him Mr. Rightoff.
Good evening. The Board tonight is considering the Amendment to the Superintendent's Employment Agreement, effective July 1, 2025. Prior to taking final action, Government Code Section 54953 requires an oral summary of the recommendation for approval on the salaries, salary schedules, or compensation paid in the form of fringe benefits of a local agency executive during open session of a regular meeting in which a final action is to be taken. Accordingly, I am providing an oral summary of the recommendations being considered by the Board today. As reflected on the amendment, the superintendent's contract is being extended for an additional year, up to and including June 30, 2027, and includes a step increase subject to a satisfactory evaluation for the '26-'27 school year. Thank you.
All right, this calls for a motion.
So moved.
Second? Roll call. Roll call vote? Ms. Young?
Yes.
Pardue, yes?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Well.
Ms. Munoz?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-1. Item G5, First Reading and Proposed Revision of Board Policy Administrative Regulations and Board Law, and Board Bylaws. Board Policy AR 6115, Ceremonies and Observances, BB 9322, Agenda Meeting Materials. Do board members have questions or comments?
I do. Okay. So in June, I brought forth the reading of a proposed resolution regarding Constitution Day, and we discussed it. And this is what I stated, and I gave it to everyone. Board Policy Constitution Day Observance, the purpose to promote awareness and understanding of the United States Constitution. Oh, I have it to pass out, too, so people can follow along. Sorry. Let me just pass, can you guys pass these stuff together? Sorry, so you guys can see. Sorry. To promote awareness and understanding of the United States Constitution among students and staff through annual observation, observance of Constitution Day on September 17. The policy statement, the Marietta Valley Unified School District recognizes Constitution Day on September 17 each year to honor the signing of the U.S. Constitution in 1787. This day will be observed with age-appropriate educational activities designed to foster civic knowledge, critical thinking, and appreciation of constitutional principles. Procedures, one, annual observance. All schools within the district shall observe Constitution Day on or near September 17 annually. Number two, educational activities. Teachers and staff are encouraged to integrate the U.S. Constitution Day content into their curricula. Activities may include, but are not limited to, lessons on the history and significance of the U.S. Constitution, discussions on the Bill of Rights and constitutional amendments, student projects, debates, or presentations related to constitutional principles, including the seven articles in the Twenty Seven Amendments, inviting guest speakers such as local government officials or historians. Number three, resources and support. The district will provide educators with access to instructional materials, digital resources, and professional development opportunities related to Constitution Day. Four, student engagement. Students will create opportunities, or sorry, schools will create opportunities for students to actively participate in Constitution Day observances to deepen their civic understanding and responsibility. And five, compliance. This policy aligns with federal guidelines requiring educational institutions receiving federal funding to recognize Constitution Day. And then the last thing, the responsibilities. The superintendent or designee shall ensure effective implementation of this policy. Principals shall coordinate Constitution Day activities at their schools. Teachers shall incorporate Constitution Day content consistent with grade level and curriculum standards. That's what I put forth. And then Dr. Anderson informed me that we have a board policy regarding special ceremonies and observances, and that it would fit best under Board Policy AR 6115, and it could be revised. So we already had one, so let's add it into there. So I thought, okay. So I had wanted it as a separate board policy since it is a federally mandated observance, but was willing to place it where he suggested. Dr. Andrews and his team updated BP AR 6115 with U.S. Constitution Day, but also added Arbor Day, Juneteenth, and Workplace Readiness Week, which are not federally mandated. Almost all the language I included in the resolution, which I just read to you so you could hear it, was deleted and made to be more general, because I was told it needs to be more general, in effect making Constitution Day on the same level of importance as Arbor Day, which I think you would all agree, that doesn't even make sense. Unlike other holidays or commemorative events such as Arbor Day or Earth Day, et cetera, U.S. Constitution Day is required by federal law according to Public Law 108-447, Section 113. Schools are required per federal funding to recognize Constitution Day. All of the observances that were added are not required to be observed. And this is taken from the Federal Register on May 24 in 2005. It states, "The Assistant Deputy Secretary for Innovation and Improvement announces that pursuant to legislation passed by Congress, educational institutions receiving federal funding are required to hold on educational program pertaining to the United States Constitution on September 17 of each year. This notice implements this provision as it applies to educational institutions receiving federal funding from the Department." The proposed revisions actually watered down the importance of U.S. Constitution Day when it is our heritage. I am not in favor of this revision. What I would like to do, and I'm not sure how I go about this, so I'm sure you'll tell me, I would like to call a vote to make that original resolution I provided in June as a separate board policy. So with all these revisions that were made to the one here, you can keep that all, but I want Constitution Day one as a separate one. Constitution Day is important enough to have its own board policy, separate from the other ceremonies and observances. And I would like the Public Law 108-447, Section 111, to be attached to this board policy. So that's my spiel.
Any other comments?
I guess I just need clarifications. So you submitted something, an actual policy?
I submitted a last, in June.
A resolution.
Resolution. It all discussed it. So it wasn't like added to anything, and then I was told it could be put on this board policy. And then that you can see the edits on this board policy. So the edits, that's fine, you can keep that, but I would like to have a board policy separate for Constitution Day.
So something in addition to.
In addition to, and I would like this attachment that I gave you attached to it.
Thank you. The, because we already have it in, and that's what the, and as you brought up the other items that were there, part of them were from California law, like workplace readiness. That wasn't something I dreamed up, although I think it's pretty.
Arbor Day, I know you didn't dream that up.
Yeah, those were already existing, and Constitution Day was already existing. What I appreciated in the recommendation that you brought were the suggested activities, and yes, we did make them generic language to commemorate all of our observances, because it fit pretty well, and they were good ideas. But we were just trying to streamline the process. But if it's the will of the Board to create its own separate and additional policy specific to Constitution Day, we certainly could explore that. I don't, I can't think off the top of my head.
What's the requirement to doing it separately? Is there a doctrine there?
I don't think so. It's just an added layer of documentation that we like.
Wouldn't it be like point whatever you throw the Constitution Day in?
Can't we just have another one? What is it going to hurt having it so? There's a million board policies, so just have a.
I can't answer that question like right here on the spot.
No, 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 it's okay.
Thank you. I need to work on that one.
I think that's the number one concern with this was, and I do know we spoke.
Yeah, we spoke to this point. And so if the Board so pleases, if that, if you're interested in that, we can research that feasibility, plausibility of doing a separate policy just for Constitution Day. Off the top of my head, I can't think of why we could not. But I also, it's, we can consider it for sure, and then bring back that approach. What we've done is taken these great ideas and tried to incorporate into existing policy is all we're trying to do, not diminish, but and take advantage of existing policy.
Just the language that was in this one, the revised one, it took away, it said, you know, it was just very blanketed to general and not like talking about like our heritage and how important it is, because it is. It is so important. And so I would just like to have that separate. And I think when I brought this in June, I was assuming that this would be already on here, and we would be going forward. And now it feels like, okay, now we have to go back and look and try again when I don't understand what the holdup is. Why can we not just? So on the, so are you saying on the next board meeting, we can vote to have this as a board policy?
So.
We can't vote for it right now?
The first reading.
Yeah, we can.
Well, I read it already.
We can make this, I think we can make adjustments. And one of the things I think is that, and I understand your frustration, which is we have a very specific idea of having a concentrated, it's just like what we're doing this year. We'd like to focus on math scores. Let's get math scores better. As a board, we'd like to focus on Constitution Day. Let's make sure our kids are really good at constitutions, at the Constitution, which, by the way, I know we have some phenomenal teachers that do such a great job with that because Mrs. Hess, shout out to Mrs. Hess, my daughter knows every single amendment inside and out, and I'm so impressed. But with that being said, I think it's just important. I think it does send a good message that, hey, the Constitution matters. We should really understand it, and I think that's what the intent was. So, all right. Any other discussion? Yep.
And I apologize, Doc. There was some sort of funding that comes from that to be able to do the things that, on this resolution to the district?
No.
There's no funding? Okay.
No, and there's no, there's no funding and like extra to do these commemorations that I know of.
Yeah, I didn't know. I saw I read it somewhere, and I think, I guess I'll define.
I thought they get federal funding, if you, to receive federal funding.
We'll have to.
It says in this attachment I gave. So, so what is, what's going to happen going forward? Because I want to just leave this here, and then we go on. What's what happened?
I think you can have a meeting with Faith and with Dr. Andrews to discuss like the details, possibly, of what that looks like. Okay.
I did.
Because we did have that conversation.
I had them know in the summer.
This test, different tests, different awards, different things that we want to do to try to encourage teachers to participate. And one of the issues is, I know as a social studies teacher, this is part of our state standards. So all the teachers are supposed to be engaged in that, and then we offer these opportunities for kids to get involved in these competitions. Was it Civic Speed?
Yeah, as we shared with the Board on Friday, and also all of our middle school teachers and administrators, the things that Mrs. Schmidt mentioned was a local U.S. Constitution test that's after they've taken their class test, because eighth graders are doing that in the next coming couple of weeks. They'll take a unit on the U.S. Constitution, and then also have them, encourage them to participate in the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Civic Speed. That's not something we've done before in the past. Chamber's really interested in. That's not something we've done before in the past, Chamber's really interested in making that go, and so are we.
So, I'm just asking, so I know what to do going forward, how do I get this on the agenda to have a vote on it, to get it on as a board policy?
It will be on the next agenda.
Yeah, what I can do in the coming days is research the feasibility, plausibility of creating a separate one, which I don't, off the top of my head, I don't think that's a problem, and we can craft something just straight off this language, if that's something the board pleases, it'd come to the board for a first reading and then approve it after. It doesn't mean we wouldn't do these things without the policy.
Sure.
Right?
No, I just want it to be formally. Formally.
I would just suggest, because we already have this other policy, that you do both, like make the updates to that policy at the bottom and the footnote reference, whatever this other policy is going to be, so that 10 years from now, if either one of them needs to be updated, you don't forget about the other one.
That would be helpful, because the current revisions that are there kind of get up to legal standard where we have been amiss, so it does correct some of that, but we can, yes, that's a good point, reference, I'm just going to make up a number, 6116.
Yeah.
Right? That would be like one specific to that one.
Yeah, that would be fine, and that's a good idea, and I would just like that attachment that I passed out on there as well. Please. Okay, so I look forward to the next board meeting.
All right, sounds good. Item G6, approval of new job, more questions, sorry.
There is two items in that G5. The other one was about the revision to BB 9322 that I proposed, I'd like to not skip over that.
Did you want to discuss it? Because it's just a first reading, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I would like to discuss it. I proposed an amendment to this board policy to create transparency for all of you, but for us as well, because I don't know if everybody knows that we're all subject to the Brown Act, so there can't be more than two of us in a room together at the same time discussing board business. So, what I found in my short time as a trustee is that I would come to these meetings, and all five of us would be operating with different information, depending on what meeting we were in, what questions got asked, and who those questions were asked to. And I think that that has led to some of the disjointedness, as we're all operating with different bits of information. And so, to create transparency across the board, but for all of you as well, I think you have a right to know what questions we're asking on your behalf, because that's a common theme I was hearing too in the public comment of like, this stuff just appears on the agenda. Has there been any conversation about it, or what diligence are we doing on your behalf? And I can see why people feel that way, because there is all of these conversations that happen, and question and answers that happen in preparation for these meetings. And so, the intent of this revision is to give you all and each other the respect of that transparency, so that moving forward, attached to the agenda that gets published, you would see the questions and the answers that we all asked.
Just on that one, I would like the board to recognize and understand that the process by which is being described here does add a layer of burden on staff time each week, or each, prior to each board meeting. And so, that is not something that we necessarily budget extra time for or staffing for, but it does have a, an added layer of burden, not just on me, because I, again, I don't, I don't get paid overtime, I just keep going, right? But to my other staff, it might add on some additional time to my staff to really accomplish that task.
I think when we all operate with the same information, that it makes us better able to make good decisions that are fully informed.
All right, is there a chance we can separate these two? Because they seem very different.
At the time of approving them, this is just first reading, they would be separate agenda items, we can agendize them into two different items.
Yeah, okay, that's what I'd like to see in the future. All right, moving on. I'm sorry, is there any other discussion on this issue? Moving along. Item G6, approval of new job description, family engagement liaison calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Is there a discussion, or you have to second it first?
Some at the first.
To second it first?
I'll second.
Okay.
Do I have a discussion?
I'm just going to say that I'm voting no on this position for now, I'm in favor of helping to provide family support with tutoring, giving out brochures to resources and such for parents, but I want to make sure that this position is not assisting in the collection of data and review, which would be surveys to continually ask students about their mental health. As I said before, the more we ask students about their mental health, the more mental health problems they have. I would like to revisit this job description and make sure that this position has nothing to do with accepting insurance and providing any kind of medical services. Once it is established that the parent center will focus on helping students and families in the area of academics, I will be open to approving this liaison.
Any specifics to this job description that you could add, detail?
For me, to Mr. Reddout, but to my knowledge, this has nothing to do with anything related to mental health services, or collecting data from parents, or anything like that. It truly was the operation of the family center.
Strengthen family engagement strategies in district programs, but like, you know, data about help, you know, with things are working, you know, within the district, help-
What types of classes they would like to have offered?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, these are like, I understand your concern, like I hear you.
I'm just not, it's trapped, because this other, this money was linked into the parent center, so I'm sorry if I'm not quite trusting that. So, until I have a guarantee that I'm going to vote no on that.
It is an interesting dynamic that I think is brought up, and we've, this used to be a big thing a year or so ago, and I talked about it, is when there's an erosion of trust, then everything comes under the microscope, and it's why I think it's so important that somehow or another, and I'm not saying you're trying to hide anything, I think it's just because of what's happening from the state and from, it seems so nefarious, this, I do put it back to AB 495 and some of the other things that have gone on in the past. I'm nervous about this as well. But anyway, any other conversations?
The board has approved this position financially in the LCAP. So, this is the position that would staff the family center, which has been completed. We're just waiting on furniture equipment to be installed, so we can start services there for families.
Or could you just amend it? Just to clarify the data component?
This was negotiated and agreed upon through CSEA, so it would take an extra step.
And we already did vote and approve this.
Well, the position, but so the job description.
Yeah, yes. I have anything about medical services in the job descriptions, this stuff's kind of-
From what I have gathered, the previous board when they voted on this was, was told that this wasn't going to, this was going to be like I said, like just having brochures and helping families, and then it turned into something that it wasn't supposed to be. So, maybe they didn't vote the way that-
This board, this board approved the LCAP.
No, the LCAP, but I'm talking about the parent center.
Right.
Any other conversation on this?
If we don't post this job and hire this position, does that mean we have a facility with no resources?
Without a person to staff it?
So, it would just be-
Empty?
It would be empty.
I mean, if, I mean, there's a first and a second, so there's a motion to approve it, so if you don't approve it, or if you, or if the, one of the people who made the motion could make a motion to amend it, to revisit this, to, you know, strengthen the part about data collection?
Well, not strengthen, just to clarify.
Yeah, clarify, or is it big concerns? It's something we would return to the, I'm assuming, Mr. Reddout, would probably a return to the bargaining table with CSEA, just clarify that, and then we could bring it back for approval.
I guess, Dr. Andrews, could you close to clarify, or just for information, the parent center is designed to do what?
To provide services to parents and families.
Outside of medical billing situation, what kind of services are those?
They would be like parenting classes, like what to do with teenagers, how do you handle your little one's cellphone, when do you get your kid's cellphone, struggling with teenagers, or I'm a brand new parent, or how do I help these things, how do I help my kids read?
Primarily parent classes.
Parent classes. Primarily, that's what it is. Also becomes a resource center where people are looking for, like maybe struggling with that. Currently, we have, three of our schools have a parent liaison, these are parents receiving a monthly stipend, that we've trained them, model after actually Moreno Valley's model of parent liaisons, and they're doing that kind of remotely out at schools, which is kind of something similar we saw in Corona. This gives us staff at the site, at that location, to staff it on a regular basis, we have operating hours, so parents, if they want to drop in, or they're kind of lost, or they're not quite sure to do. Also, our school counselors would have resources, so if it's something beyond what a school counselor can do, they can point them to that facility, and we can maybe offer them there.
So, isn't there someone already that apparently is on role for our district, I think it's Tamara?
She's a coordinator, a lot of supervisory responsibilities.
So, not, this was not in her purview?
No, not directly, not to operate it and be in that space six hours a day.
Six hours a day.
I believe it's a six hour position.
President Burge, may I make a suggestion? One thing the board could do is with the clarification and deeper understanding provided by the superintendent and other cabinet members, if you did approve the job description, it would be subject to your understanding that it is, that that is not part of their responsibility, whether it's medical services or other issues that you have discussed, but with that understanding, the board votes however you vote.
Does that understanding have to be in writing, if in the future it comes to question?
I think, I think you could, you could state it as a motion, is what you would do.
Okay.
You know, with this understanding, we're proposing the approval of the job description.
Are we allowed to just table it for now and revisit it at a future date?
There's a motion on the floor right now.
Okay.
But to Mr. Pearl's point, if so, if it were approved with the understanding this is not for medical services or mental health services, you would approve it on that condition.
Okay, and we have it on record because it's recorded. I can, I can agree to that.
All right, roll call, go. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Pardue, yes?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Motion carries four one. Item G7, approval of revised job descriptions, family services support aid one and two, proposed revision to early learning aid one and two, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
Let's have a roll call. I think everyone's going to be this way. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Pardue, yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries five zero. Approval of personnel report, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
I need a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G9, approval of substitute salary schedule effective August 12th, 2025, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G10, approval of adult education courses for the 2025-26 school year, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G11, student discipline expulsion case number 2024-2025-147. I move that the Board of Education of the Murrieta Valley Unified School District expelled a student for the violation of California Education Code 48900, Section B, under Education Code, Section 48915B1, for first and second semester of the 2025-26 school year. Roll call, or?
I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
You might want to-
Roll call.
Roll call. Ms. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Pardue, yes?
Yes.
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 Motion carries five zero. Item G12, approval and adoption of joint community facilities agreement with the City of Murrieta and Century Communities of California, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G13, approval to award a contract to DLR Group for the Murrieta Valley Unified School District Facility Master Plan.
They're moved.
What motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G14, approval to award the contract to Team Civic X for professional services, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G15, approval of revised agreement between the City of Murrieta and the Murrieta Valley Unified School District for school resource officer services, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G16, approval to renew contract with Cisco Foods for providing specialty foods for the 2025-26 school year, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G17, approval of deductive change order for contract C0001405 for the Buchanan Elementary School Playground Rubber System Replacement Project, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Item G18, approval of deductive change order for contract C0001342 for the Early Learning and Enrichment Center Playground Equipment and Rubber System Replacement Project, calls for a motion.
They're moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Adjournment, I call for a motion to adjourn the Board of Education meeting at 8:32 PM.
Okay. Second, third board.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries five zero. Meeting is adjourned.